Welcome to City Hall and good morning to all of you. We'll call this meeting to order. With us today is Pastor Joel Halford of Bethel Life Center Church to provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and we invite you for both to stand up. Pastor Halford.
Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts for the privilege of serving our community. We thank you for the dedication and commitment of Merwu and the council members as they work to improve the lives of people in Wichita. Grant them wisdom, discernment, and use unity as they deliberate on the matters at hand. Guide their decisions with your divine insight, assuring that their choices promote justice, peace, prosperity for all residents. Help them to act with integrity, compassion, and fairness, considering the needs and well-being of every individual in our city. We pray for the continued growth and development of Wichita. Bless our leaders with the strength and perseverance to face challenges and the vision to seize opportunities that will benefit our community. May their efforts foster a spirit of cooperation and harmony among all citizens. Lord Jesus, we ask for your protection and guidance over our city. Keep our community safe and help us support one another with kindness and respect. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you again Pastor Halford. Madam Clerk, please call the first item.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 4th, 2024.
Do we have approval of the minutes? Or June 4th, 2024? Or any corrections or changes?
I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Maria Peschka, Complete Gaza Ceasefire.
Is Maria here this morning? Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Mary Dean, Stance on Reparations Ordinance.
Greetings. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the Wichita Council, esteemed members of the City Law Department, City Manager, and members of the City's Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Advisory Board. I stand before you today to address a matter that has been pending for more than sixty days. The establishment of a fully funded commission to study reparations in Wichita for Black residents. This delay has not gone unnoticed and it is imperative that we understand the reasons behind it. The request for reparations, for a reparations commission was brought forward by local activist and president of Kansas Justice Advocate, Inc., Mary Dean, which is me, who has been advocating for the rights of people for over forty years. She emphasized the historical injustices faced by the Black community and the critical, crucial role such as a commission would play in addressing systemic disparities. There are, there is, there are PowerPoint presentation, I'm sorry, explaining with guest Kansas City, Missouri Attorney Mickey Dean and Mary Dean on her YouTube channel to explain what reparations is and is all about. The establishment of this commission is not just about financial compensation. It is about restoring dignity, providing opportunities for advancement, and fostering an environment where every resident can thrive. It is about acknowledging the past and taking concrete steps toward a more equitable future. The delay in decision making can be attributed to several factors. The complexity of the issue require careful consideration and thorough examination. The language of the ordinance proposal needed to be reviewed by the legal department to ensure it aligns with the city's laws and recognition, resident, resident, regulation, sorry, which I understand the ordinance has been through the law department for review since February the 5th, 2024. However, it is crucial that you do not let these complexities hinder progress. The longer you wait, the longer you deny justice to those who have been wrong for decades and now. It is your responsibility as leaders to guide Wichita towards a path of progress and equality. I urge you to expedite the process and decide on establishing, uh, the establishment of this commission. Let Wichita join other cities that have taken bold steps toward making amends for past wrongs. Let Wichita show that it is committed to progress, equality, and justice for all. Thank you. I'm here for questions. I'd like to understand what's going on.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks Mayor. Thank you Elder Dean. I agree with you that there are some complexities there and this is something that is truly important. I don't really have a answer on that as we've been working on that. We do have most of the ordinance proposal done. It's not complete just yet. But I do think at this point, it would be a good time to send all of that to the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Advisory Board. One of the challenges there is that that board is also going through some rejuvenation. So there's a lot of new members there. And I know that you want this to be an expedited process. I believe all of the appointments have been made to that board, if not a majority of them. But as of today, if there's no objection, we could move that everything gets presented to them at their next meeting or their meeting in August and they can begin to debate and look at not only what that ordinance looks like, but the complexities to be addressed. One of the easiest things to highlight is the redlining that happened in this city. There's a lot of equity issues with that. Wichita was the third most redlined city in the country. That's something that they could look at as far as affordable housing, opportunities for investment, things of that nature. But again, I think that would probably be the quickest route to go and we could do that as of today. But again, it would be presented to them at their meeting. You'd be welcome to go. It's a public meeting. You could talk to them about the importance of that. You could share the materials that you've sent to us with them as well so they kind of know the background on that and help them craft what will ultimately be presented to the council. Is that something that you would like to participate in?
Absolutely. So you're saying their next meeting is in August?
No, they meet once a month. I don't know right now because I don't have it up on my screen. So I don't know when their next meeting is. They could get that at the next meeting. Part of the challenge that I said to you was that there's a bunch of new members. So they're also learning what that board is supposed to do at this point. So if we present it to them at the next meeting and they don't have their footing just yet, it may take a little bit longer, which is why I said July or August.
Okay. I would like to participate in that, you know, at that meeting. I'd like to be there. I'd like to ask the question, have all of you received the letters that have came in and that I sent to you that supports Wichita creating a commission? Have you received those letters? I'd like to thank you for that. So I'm hoping and praying that Councilman Johnson and my Councilman, Hoheisel, that that this process, I'm not gonna say speedy because, you know, I want it to be expedited because I think we waited a long time to get some kind of decision on a commission, a fully funded commission. I've also submitted addendums when I submitted the ordinance to show how to support that and who can support that as well. So I'm looking forward to the next steps when it comes to the ordinance and I will be looking forward for someone to contact me to attend that meeting.
Dante, do you know when the next meeting is?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, the district, excuse me, I get my words confused. The Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Advisory Board meets the third Tuesday of every month. So the next meeting is actually next week, which will be a bit soon to your point, Councilmember Johnson. The board will meet July 16th and August 20th. I can work with Mike Irvin. He's the staff leader is on to the board and make sure that Elder Dean is in the loop as far as the development of an agenda item.
Okay. Thank you Dante.
So you'll send me an email? Someone will send me an email?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item. Andrew Crane, Transportation, Access for the Disabled Community and Blind Community and Sidewalk Access Along the River.
Good morning. Andrew Crane, 250 West Douglas Avenue in downtown Wichita. I am wanting to address you guys today. The Access Advisory Board had a letter and the State House on the, the big problem that disabled and blind individuals are facing right now is the, the, the big long list, which that list is that the state of Kansas did, did get fixed and, and that, but we still have lots of work to do. And when you guys address the, the State House or the next time that you guys go up to the State House, make sure to mention on the, on the, the disabled list for services and that, blind and disabled folks need services in the, the state of Kansas and in Wichita. There is a big problem on different services here. And it, it was in the, the newspaper and also we got a, another letter from the, the State House too. So please take a look at that and, and that, and when is your guys' next meeting with your government person that's in Topeka is what I want to know.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you Mayor. Are you talking about getting something on the legislative agenda for?
Yes.
Okay, we, we are in contact with our, our comm staff is in contact with us. So during the year, we come up with issues that pop up like this and we decide to push forward and put it on our legislative agenda for next session. So we're in contact with them somewhat regularly.
When, when do you guys get to meet, meet with them here in Wichita so we can actually, you know, voice, voice our opinion because the Access Advisory Board is mad as mad can be. And, you know, this, the, the list that folks are on is, needs to be bye-bye.
The.
And, and that, and you, you guys need to be able to work on that and to help the disabled and blind community in, in, in the great state of Kansas. And, and that, and I'm a well-known blind individual and I, I'm actually on that list and I, I am still on that list and it's gonna be a long time since my, my number comes up, folks.
As, as far as discussing policy with our state legislators, it's usually the end of the year after elections. There's a number of legislators who might not be around after elections this time. So usually in the fall, they start having legislative forums, December, early January before they go back to, to, to the session.
Okay. Hoheisel, if we can, if we can get a meeting with them, that, that would be fantastic because I would like to voice my opinion and I would like to go up there with you guys at, at the State House and address this.
Well, I'll let you know when the meetings will be.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you Mayor. Andrew, I just had a question and Councilmember Hoheisel touched on it a little bit. What do you think the missing piece is? Is the missing piece having the right people at the table with the blind and visually impaired? Or are you not getting invited to talk to the right people? Or what, what would you, what is an idea of what a solution could be for you? Because I know how active you are obviously in the community, but what is, what is your idea of the missing link?
The, the missing link is we, I, I think we all need to work together on helping the, the disabled and blind community out. And one, one of the things is the, you're, you're exactly right. The right people need to be at the table and, and that. And we also need to invite a lot of the Access Advisory Board because that, that board, you know, goes back to, to you guys and, and that, to get things going here in Wichita for the disabled and blind community. And, and I'm on that Access Advisory Board. I serve proudly on that board. And we, we just need to come together as, as one and work together to get this done.
I appreciate it.
And with transportation also.
I agree. Thank you so much for serving on these boards and advocating and I'll help with Councilmember Hoheisel to make sure that you learn when we go down to Topeka.
Thank you.
Or up to Topeka. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Marsha Alterman, Capital Improvement Funding Request for the Golf Board of Governors.
Good morning. I'm Marsha Alterman, 8615 East Champion Street in Wichita. I'm also one of the representatives on the Wichita Golf Board of Governors. First, for the records, I'd appreciate it if the spelling of my first name could get corrected in, for the minutes. It's M-A-R-C-I-A, so would appreciate that. And thank you for allowing me to take a few minutes to address the council. I was fortunate enough to be part of the interview committee when the wise decision was made to hire Jesse Kaufman as the Director of Golf. And I want to commend Jesse and the various course professionals and the staff for their work over the past two years. There've been many great strides made at the golf courses through their dedication and hard work and I just don't want that to go unmentioned or unnoticed. As a rep on the Board of Governors, I learned more than I ever thought I would about growing and maintaining turf, about irrigation systems, clubhouse management, and overall creating success in this industry. Before being on the board, I was just one of those golfers who was very passionate about playing the sport, but I really had no idea what it takes to make a golf course work. And to be honest, I was sometimes one of those who complained about the course conditions, especially when the grass was thin or nonexistent, since good turf is the mainstay of a golf course. Wichita has an outstanding park system and our four golf courses are an integral part of that. The parks and in particular the golf courses are a reflection of the excellent quality of life that Wichita can be proud of. But with that in mind, there is a fundamental obligation to maintain and support those parks, golf courses, and green spaces. A functional irrigation system is possibly the most important part of the maintenance of a golf course. The United States Golf Association states that the expected life of an irrigation system is between fifteen and thirty years, but the system at Sim Golf Course is thirty-eight years old. And the youngest golf course, Auburn Hills, has an irrigation system that is twenty-six years old. Clearly, it's already late in the game to initiate a plan to revitalize the existing systems. Only through the hard work and creativity of the present and past staff are we even limping by at our courses and that's barely limping by. So I'm here today to ask the council members to seriously consider the funding plan that has been submitted by the Board of Governors to finance these improvements over a number of years. The initial part of the plan is to start on the Sim irrigation system as soon as possible before that course is simply not functional. The estimates that the staff has received so far are between 1.5 and 2, 2 million per course. And the details of the submitted plan explain the balance between the requested capital improvement funding and the supplemental funds that will come directly from the Golf Division budget. We realize these numbers are significant, but an irrigation system that works is vital to the courses. Not having good turf on the golf courses is like not having nets on the tennis courts, backstops at the Ball Diamonds, or flowers at Botanica. And there are paybacks to a good irrigation system. There will be significant savings in labor costs when the Band-Aid approach is no longer being used and the maintenance crews can devote time and energy to actual productivity instead of constantly putting out fires. A more efficient irrigation system will actually use significantly less water. One consultant informed us that SIM would have saved about 10 million gallons in 2023 with a new system. Lower utility bills will result from a modern pump station and the cost of fertilizer will actually be reduced with a system that delivers appropriate water placement. In spite of the current concerns over course conditions, our courses are finding some successes. There has been significant increases in the past three years and a number of, I'm sorry, a number of improvement projects have been paid for from the golf budget. The courses are attracting corporate and fundraiser tournaments, which expose even the most casual or occasional golfer to the benefits of golf. Golf is a lifetime sport and the efforts that we're making to attract junior golfers, high school tournaments, collegiate events, and yet still invite seniors to our courses are all paying off. But in order for the courses to continue to survive and attract people to this aspect of our beautiful city, the Golf Division needs support for this major expenditure that's been postponed for years. The scope of Wichita golf is wide. The golf courses serve more citizens than just the dedicated three times a week golfer. So as you address your upcoming budget plans, please give the submitted request for the CIP funding your support. A good number of your constituents realize the importance of this project as evidenced by the golfers that are here today in support. And as always, the Golf Division staff and the Board of Governors are available to you if there are any questions or concerns. Thank you and I'll take any questions or comments.
Councilmember Johnston.
Marsha, thank you for coming and speaking. Also being an avid golfer, I'm in your court, so.
Indeed.
So to speak.
I hear.
I agree that Jesse sitting in the audience has done an absolutely great job. His involvement in, in getting more juniors and women playing golf is commendable and just a great effort in doing that. So I also think that our, we are focusing a lot on maintenance, on taking care of the things we've got. The four golf courses are a tremendous asset to our community. It helps in recruitment of, for employers to recruit people to Wichita and to keep people in Wichita. So it's a very important asset and we do need to take care of. So thank you for your efforts.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you Mayor. Marsha, thank you for being here. I too got to sit on the panel to hire Jesse that has done an incredible job and, you know, I am not a golfer, but I represent Sims and I know how important the golf course is to our community and I learned that during the election and worked really hard to not privatize our public courses. And Jesse's done a fantastic job of improving those clubhouses, getting new golf carts, and a million other things, also encouraging more people to golf and more often. So, excuse me, more people are playing golf than they have in years, maybe decades. And I think it is incredibly important to pay attention. You can't play golf if we don't have grass. So I would hate to spend all of that money and make all of these improvements and then not have the grass to actually play golf on. So I am definitely in support of trying to figure out a way and I appreciate that the board is willing to do some type of match just to get this started. So I just wanted to publicly show my support. I think it's incredibly important and thank you so much for coming. And raise your hand if you play on the public courses and you're here. Wonderful. Thank you all for taking the time to be here. And Jesse, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you Mayor. This is not about the last speaker, but this is about the public agenda as a whole. I was just seeing when, we had had comments regarding reforms to the public agenda process and I was interested to see when that might be coming back before council for a vote.
Councilmember, that ordinance drafting is still in process. We're getting input from different sources and what that could look like at this time. So we should probably have that a couple of weeks.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent agenda items one through fifteen.
Councilmembers, are there any items to be pulled?
Madam Mayor, I would like to pull item number seven just for discussion.
Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items minus number seven?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. We're gonna discuss agenda item, consent agenda item number seven. Councilmember Glasscock.
Yes, thank you Madam Mayor. This would be a question for staff just given, I know that this is our next agenda item, so maybe we move consent agenda item number seven to after number, new council business item number one, but just given the school board's delay, I didn't know if we would talk about the agreement amendment in conjunction with that and if this would change our, I mean really, our discussion for number one might have bearing on this consent agenda item was my only point of clarification. Sir Troy or Dante?
So Councilmember Glasscock, Assistant City Manager Troy Anderson is prepared to discuss both. As far as the order, the council takes the items up. I think Jennifer can provide guidance whether we bring it, the consent item to the new business agenda or if we keep it on the consent agenda. the consent agenda.
Councilmember Glasscock, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. So while both of these items do appear on this agenda, there is some convenience to that, but for all intents and purposes, the item as part of the regular agenda may not necessarily have any bearing on the continued work that our development partner has done and will need to do in order to continue to strive towards satisfying the goals and objectives of the development agreement that we set forth before them, so.
I have further questions regarding this. Can you please help the community understand and council understand the difference between HomeARP dollars versus ARPA revenue replacement dollars, which I guess are two different buckets of money and two different items, but still talking about homelessness?
Correct, so, so the original development agreement that we entered into with this group, with our development partner, the original contract, the funds were being paid for out of HomeARP dollars. So originally, the HomeARP allocation was approximately $5.5 million. Of that $5.5 million, we can utilize up to 15% of that for administrative expenses, which is about $826,000. That 15% has to carry us not only from sort of conceptual clear through the project and even through the 15-year compliance period, right? And so to date, we have spent about $454,000 of that $826,000. And again, that has, that is more than just the funds that are attributed to this development agreement and this partnership. There are funds that were expended even back when we were developing the HomeARP allocation plan, advertising, staff time, so on and so forth. So the $454,000 that I just referenced is not all attributed to this development agreement. In fact, only a portion of that $454,000 that have already been spent out of this 15% is really only attributed to this development agreement. This addendum, number one, is for services rendered that were beyond the original scope of the agreement. And so this just allows that development partner to continue to do the work to try and get to the end goals and objectives that have been put before them, but the addendum that is being presented to you all today for the $159,911 will be paid for out of ARPA revenue replacement dollars. Again, we want to hold on to any of those remaining HomeARP dollars because those dollars have to try and carry us through not only the project but through the 15-year compliance period, whereas the ARPA revenue replacement dollars can be spent today. So there's two different funds, two different buckets of money, so to speak, and so appreciate the question and an opportunity to make the distinction.
And can you explain the ARPA revenue replacement fund bucket? How much is that?
Oh man, I do not have that information available, we can get you that information.
And one additional question regarding HomeARP allocation. So that's $5.5 million. Up to 15% of the $5.5 million can be spent on administrative expenses. The remaining $4 million, are there any restrictions regarding those $4 million, and can you explain those restrictions?
Yeah, the remaining funds, the allocation of those funds is spelled out in that HomeARP allocation plan. Again, I don't have that in front of me today, but we can get you that breakdown.
Councilmember Glasscock.
How long will this agreement extend our partnership with Petra?
So again, the $160,000 that we're talking about here today as part of the addendum is primarily for services already rendered, right? They've already done this work that was in addition to the original scope. Our contract with Petra continues until, the goal is that there's a project, right? And so this addendum does not necessarily extend that timeline per se, nor does it necessarily shorten that timeline. This is for, to reimburse them for services rendered that were in addition to what was originally contemplated in the agreement.
Last question I have, do we have any speculation of how much more we will spend as part of this development?
That's a great question. Again, of that remaining HomeARP allocation for the 15%, there's about $372,000 remaining. Again, the, how that will get drawn down over a period of time, I can't even begin to speculate. I know that we will begin to the point of the other item on the agenda, I don't want to speak into that too much, right? But based on that, yes, there will be a number of services that our development partner will perform in the near future, assuming we can identify a real estate opportunity, continue to perform due diligence, and try to achieve a project.
I'd be interested in what the estimate is going to be for it too, because if this $159,000 is for things already completed, I would want to know how much more we're going to invest in this before we can continue to invest it, because I don't want to come back here, you know, six months from now, and we're like, hey, we're going to pay them $200,000 more from, you know, an extension of what work they did previously as well.
So in, in the conversations we've had with our development partner, assuming that we continue down the path of this real estate opportunity, no additional funds will be needed, right? That between the original agreement and this addendum, that will carry us through our obligation to get through this real estate opportunity. If for whatever reason this real estate opportunity doesn't come to fruition, and we have to kind of go back out to market and reevaluate real estate opportunities, there may have to be a conversation that has to take place about what that looks like. But as it's identified right now, if we continue down the path of pursuing this one real estate opportunity, no additional funds will be required.
I have additional questions. So for instance, services rendered so far include, is it accurate to say those services include the application for light tech credit or low income housing tax credit that got denied, in addition to advocating for statewide funding that got denied, and then evaluating one opportunity, real estate option, and this new real estate option?
Yes, a more defined answer is included in the agenda packet at the end of the addendum number one is an exhibit, Exhibit A, that spells out what services were rendered and how they've arrived at the $159,000. But to your point, generally speaking, yes, it were, it was those things, but a more detailed explanation of those additional services rendered is in the exhibit on the backside of the addendum.
One more question. So because these are services already rendered, we're owing, obviously, our development partner, but moving forward, if it keeps getting denied at different levels, whether it's at the city council level, at the USD 259 level, or at the state level, what then happens to, I guess, this agreement that we have with this development partner?
Again, I think that we're kind of at that point, right, of, we know what the trajectory looks like for this real estate opportunity, the time, energy, and effort that's been put in thus far, and what is anticipated to complete that trajectory. If for whatever reason we continue to, to see challenges put before us, then at that point in time, we may have to kind of come back and reevaluate what it is that we're actually trying to accomplish, reevaluate the goals and objectives, and make those determinations at this point, at that point. At this point, given the real estate opportunity that is before us, this addendum satisfies the trajectory of trying to satisfy that development opportunity, but if plans change, then we may have to reevaluate what we're trying to do.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. If staff could get me Exhibit A, it was a minute in my packet. Councilmember Hoheitzel just showed it to me, if you can get it to me, I'd appreciate that.
Because this is, again, services rendered, it's, these are items that are not moving forward beyond today, per se, so I feel, I'd like legal to chime in on this specific consent agenda item, if we can delay this also to the June 27th meeting, or, sorry, the next meeting that we would have post the discussion of the new agenda item that's coming forward.
Mayor, this is a matter that you could vote to defer until a date that you feel is appropriate, when you've had further time to consider it, there's no strict deadline on that item.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Do we have to take public comment on this item since we opened it up before we begin
Ordinance is silent on that, you know, it now is, it is off the consent agenda, so I would lean towards suggesting that public comment's appropriate?
Perfect. So I move that we now go to public agenda, oh, sorry, public comment regarding this consent agenda item, which was pulled from the consent agenda. Are there any members in the audience who would like to speak regarding this item? Please state your name and the district that you live.
I'm not sure what the district number is, I'm not used to being in this forum, but my name is Linda Orban. I live 737 South Everett in Wichita, and myself and my colleague, James Larson, we are with Search and Rescue Outreach Ministries. We are on the street on a regular basis with the homeless, and we call them our friends on the street, we prefer not to say homeless, but in all of this, I was at Saturday's meeting, and I would have loved to speak with you afterwards, but you sort of got inundated with, which I imagine you do at a regular, on a regular basis, but if we could have that opportunity at some point, that would be great. On, at Saturday's meeting, there was a lot of discussion, not only about where it's going to be in the neighborhood, and, and I understand all that. We are trying to focus, most of the agencies, be it mental health or whatever the case may be, are all north of Kellogg, everything is downtown. And so the people who are south of Kellogg, who are either panhandling just to get a meal or, let's face it, other things, have no way of getting to those resources, either by way of bus or whatever, or they have to walk, which they do anyway, but the, it makes no sense to us, I believe you were asking, saying that there was, they were asking for $30 million for, to renovate Park School, when the original project, we were looking at Riverside Hospital. If Riverside Hospital, and I understand there was only one person that voted against city dollars being used for that project, but why spend $30 million to renovate a school when Riverside Hospital already has individual rooms that they can be housed in? To me, that makes no sense. We are trying to focus, we've been looking at getting either like an abandoned hospital such as Riverside, or an old nursing home, something that already has individual beds in it. We'd like to get something like that south of Kellogg, because, as I said again, everything is downtown. What we are hearing from the people down south, we met with a gentleman who was here only like three weeks from New York, he was homeless in New York, thought coming to Wichita was going to be a better situation. In that three-week period of time, he had already been beat up and robbed four times, and he was told by other homeless on the street that Wichita stands for what I can't have, I take anyway. I think that's a really bad stigma for our city. And so I don't, I don't know what the answer is here, but I, I guess I'd just like to understand more about, you know, what the reasoning is behind this person denying the Riverside project, which is already got everything set up there, has a kitchen, has laundry facilities, has everything, and going to the school, if someone could address that.
I'll have more. Vice Mayor Ballard first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for being here. We still actually do have an option on Riverside Hospital. My personal thoughts, just briefly, are that building costs about $6.5 million just to buy the building, and then we would have to do renovations and, you know, all of those different things. So ideally, I think it's a great option too, for the same reasons that you do, they're already set up, I've toured the building, I think it's an excellent option, but the cost of the building right now is a lot in comparison to potentially an option on the school, which is, the location is obviously the most important, we learned a lot about location during the winter shelter this past year. So we do still have an option on Riverside, it's just the cost of the actual building might be more than we can handle right now, since we didn't get awarded the low income tax credits, along with any help from the state to, for now at least. So I just wanted to give those couple comments, and I appreciate you being here.
Not a problem, I appreciate you hearing us. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you very much for speaking, I appreciate that. I'm also a member of the Homeless Task Force, along with Councilmember Vice Mayor Ballard. So it's, it's a passion of mine too, and I think we need to find a long-term, sustainable solution. Have you been through Riverside?
I have, not since they closed, but Riverside Hospital was...
Yeah, we took a tour of it, and it would need significant renovation to be ready for a shelter. It hasn't, limited maintenance has occurred over, since you've probably been through it. So it would take significant renovation. The option with Park provides a good option that's close to a lot of the providers, they're already there, so they could walk to those providers and get to appointments and things like that. The other factor is, is ongoing cost to run it. There's a gap in what, there's, there's Troy and his team working diligently on, on what it would cost along the, with the providers, the long cost of what it would cost to run it, maintain it, the sustainability of it, and there's a gap there, and we need to figure that out. That gap increases when you go to Riverside, just a bigger facility. So those are all questions that have to be answered, they're working, Troy and his team are working hard on that, along with providers, Humankind, Open Door, Lord's Diner, a lot of people are working in this space and trying to find out a solution to this problem. What concerns me is, I don't know, we have a Plan B for this winter.
Exactly. Or, or even for this summer, what happens when the temperatures get to 105 like they did last year? You know, where, where are we going to put them then?
Yeah, we need a 365, 24/7.
Absolutely, and that's what we'd love to do. And our thing was, we, we were trying to get the Christian community involved, Christian businesses and stuff, because there is so much, sorry, but there's so much red tape involved in government that, you know, it, it's crazy trying to get anything done. And with the, the Christian businesses being involved, and it all coming from private money, private donations and stuff, we just feel like we'd be able to get more done, but does the city have a, anything south of Kellogg that's been abandoned? How do we find out what city-owned property south of Kellogg has been abandoned that they would be willing to donate to a nonprofit for some sort of shelter or something? Even trying to get them into, like detox, like SAC, you know, is crazy. If they have a warrant out, SAC will only hold them for 24 hours, then they're gone, they're back out in the street, that does no help. You know, our goal, what the Lord put on our heart, was not to just go out and feed them and clothe them and leave them in their current situation, but to actually help them in their situation, get them into detox, into calm care, you know, into sober living. But... But that's such a hard process with the things that are in place now. You know, if somebody has an addiction, we're willing to physically take them to SAC and have them put us as a contact for, you know, when they get out, so that we know how to follow up with them, things like that. But even that has just, it's been crazy trying to get people to work together and just to try to find a bed for somebody.
You've morphed into what a long-term plan would be homeless. That's exactly what Task Force is working on, and I'd like to have a further discussion with you sometime.
Absolutely. So would we.
Contact me or leave me your contacts or information, and I'll have contact. And thank you very much for the work you're doing. It really does mean a lot, so I thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Johnston. Thank you, full council.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Ms. Orban, one quick comment, too. I want to echo the comments of my colleagues as well, so I won't reiterate anything they said. I agree with their sentiments. You had also said what, you were not sure what council district you live in. You live in mine, and so I would love to meet with you as well. So my email, I'll make sure you get it afterward. But we can have a further discussion about the multi-agency center as a whole, why centralized location, I think makes sense, why Park or Riverside would be great options, and I'd be happy to talk to you more about it as well.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Glasscock.
Thank you.
I will leave my card and information, our card, with, with her, so that you, it's got our email address, everything on it, so you can get...
Yeah, please do. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Who did we recently contract out with for the sober beds for homeless? Was that Calm Care or was that SAC?
I'm sorry, say again.
Oh, I was asking staff.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
We recently contracted out to, with the alcohol funding. Was it SAC or was that Calm Care that we contracted out with for the beds for homeless?
Man, I...
Sally to the rescue.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Sally Steng, Housing and Community Services. So we had two contracts, actually, one with Substance Abuse Center of Kansas, SAC, to do assessments, a licensed addiction counselor to do assessments. And then we contracted with DECA for 20 dedicated inpatient, 28-day inpatient beds, yes.
Okay, so, yeah, just so you guys know, we do have options there for homeless people who are having addiction issues.
We have people in there now.
Okay, all right. Well, it's good to hear. Thank you.
Public comment continues.
Yes. We're going to double-teed you here. My name's James Larson. I live at 2617 West 34th Street North. I'm a child of God and I'm a warrior for Christ. I was saved in 2020, and God really put it on my heart to help these people on the street. You know, before that, I wouldn't even look at them, wouldn't even give them the time of day. But with what happened with me through the love of God, it's become something that I'm really adamant about. And I appreciate what Linda said, and, you know, the bottom line here, to help these people is money, which unfortunately, we don't have a lot of. When I see the city moving forward with trying to help someone, I just want to make sure that you all understand the enormity of repression that are put on these people every day. I mean, I would probably ask, and you don't have to, by show of hands, have how many people been on the street and talked to these people that are sitting in here? All right, that's awesome. That's awesome. So we go out every Saturday, we see them, you know, a lot of the stuff's about complaints, about systems that are already in place, sober living houses. Now, not all of them, but there are some out there that are misappropriating money. They're allowing drugs and alcohol to come into these places, and I think there needs to be more accountability there. Because, you know, most of them don't want to go to them places, especially if they're adamant about getting off the street, if they're adamant about quitting using drugs. They go to these places and it's just, you know, it draws it all in. I mean, people are bringing drugs in, they're bringing alcohol in, and there's no checking on a system that helps these people to stay clean. And, you know, DECA is a good organization. I have a couple of gentlemen that are in there right now, but the complaints I get from them is, is that 95% of the people that are going in there are forcibly having to go. They're having to go due to court or whatever. So now you have people that want to get sober that are in there, that are combined with these people. It's basically a jail mentality that are court-ordered to take these, and it's not beneficial for the people that are there actually trying to get clean or trying to help their situation. The mental illness is through the roof, you know? We see probably 50% mental illness, 40% drugs, and the other 10% of people are, they're just there from one instance in their life that has put them on the street. And we all need to recognize that we're one instance away from being out there ourselves. And I don't know if you guys actually have thought about that, you know, some of us that are college-educated, not me, but, you know, that have good jobs, you know, if you had something happen in your life, you'd be out there. So I just ask that you open your heart to who these people are and what their struggle is, and that there's a need, and we just don't need to throw money at it. That doesn't do anything for them. It gives the spaces. We've worked directly with Our Calling in the Dallas Metroplex area. They're self-funded, you know, that's eventually what we want to look at. They got a $6 million a year budget. They got a brand-new 30,000-square-foot facility for men and women. They're doing it on $6 million a year. You know, we're talking 30 million here, plus additional. No?
Actually inaccurate, so I would like Troy to come address some of the dollar amounts regarding the building and operating costs, which are two different things.
Well, and he can. Yeah, go ahead.
In regards to the, the item on the other agenda, yes, the acquisition cost, so the building, I don't have my paperwork in front of me, I should go. I think it's 49,000-square-foot building. We have some preliminary estimates on how many beds we might be able to put into that facility. Right now, we have some really, really early estimates of what the annual operating costs might be. I hate to share any of that work, just because it's purely speculative at this point, right? We, we shared this Saturday as part of the open house, that one of the reasons why we are considering an option agreement is to allow us to get into the building and do the due diligence, so that we know and understand exactly what the renovations might be required, and we can continue to work with our development partner. Our development partner, Petra, as part of their team, they also have HFG Architecture and Macallan Gordon Construction. So we have two of some of the industry-leading experts locally to help guide us and advise us on renovations and costs associated with the same, right? So, but until we can get into the building and begin to continue our due diligence, do we really know what the actual construction renovation costs? Subsequently, until we can get into the building and understand what that's going to look like, can we really understand what the long-term operation and maintenance costs are going to be? And so while we do have some general industry-standard best practice models of what those operational costs are going to look like, again, I hate to share any of that today, because it's purely speculative at this point.
So can you please just address, what's the $30 million, if that's inaccurate? Can you just share that?
And I apologize, the $30 million was...
On Saturday, when you were taking questions and answering, you said that you had asked for $30 million.
Gotcha. Yeah, so, so that was a request to the state, right, to specifically carve out and allocate $30 million, a $30 million grant program that could have been made available to every city, every county in the state, so that it's, it would just, it would have just been a $30 million grant program for the entire state of Kansas to specifically assist in funding the construction or renovation to provide homelessness infrastructure. There were a lot of nuances associated with that grant program, but that $30 million grant program was a, a request that was made, and it was presented to the state legislature to stand up that program, and the state chose not to at this time. So that's, that was the $30 million.
Yeah, thank you. And if he doesn't mind, we'll probably end up talking with him as well, as far as that goes. I'm just saying, I think you guys know what the problem is. It's pretty big. There's a lot of hurt, there's a lot of pain out there, the things that I can tell you that I've seen and done. So I'm very happy that you guys are finally seeing, and I think you knew all along, that something was going to have to be done. So we just ask that you do your due diligence when doing this, and make sure that we're not, you know, involving outside entities that come in and just ruin, ruin it for the people that are there actually trying to help themselves. We are, you know, in a position, you know, for me, this organization that we started here with God's consent has only been in effect for a year, but we've probably had over 300 contacts. We've sent, you know, multiple people to, to detox and to inpatient. But with the homelessness, I think that the mental illness issue is just as high up there as the homeless is. I mean, the mental health out there is just running rampant, and obviously, people turn away from them people because of their situation and sometimes how they come across with people that don't understand that. So we're just thankful that you let us speak, and we're grateful for anything that you might be able to do to help us and to help the homeless out there. So just want to let you know that this is our, our work, this is what we do, and this is what we've been called to do. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. I just will add one additional comment. There are a lot of individuals and providers in this space, a lot. And collaboration is the key to all of this. We are trying to play our part as local government, working with other entities like providers, like faith-based, like businesses, because this is a community-wide challenge, and it requires all community members to be part of the solution in one way or another. And so we are trying, and these are our efforts in making that first step. And I really am grateful that people are coming to speak up. And so if we have additional individuals that would like to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Mayor, with...
Councilmember Glasscock.
With one quick comment. I know there may be individuals to speak about the larger agreement, maybe with Park Elementary as a whole, but if we could limit comments to be germane to this particular agreement, and then we could open it up for public comment.
Are there any additional public comments regarding the consent agenda item that was pulled, item number seven, regarding the development agreement and services that have already been rendered and now need to be paid for? I see no further public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just want the assurance that this $159,000 would run through the length of any extended agreement due to a delay of the next vote. My concern would be if, let's, if we table the next vote, given the school board's decision yesterday to table, would we have to come back, you know, adding an additional $20,000? Would this continue through that? And then with the understanding that, let's say that this opportunity didn't pan out, that we would, that we would come before this body, before we offered any extension of an agreement to look at other properties?
Yes, I can confirm that I've spoken with our development partner, and they have agreed that, yes, this addendum will carry them through the remainder of their contract agreement as it exists today with the intended real estate option, right? Or the, the real estate opportunity. To your point, yes. If for whatever reason, we have to change course and pursue some other real estate opportunity, then to your point, yes, we would, at that point in time, we've had the conversation with the Law Department of, maybe at that point in time, we kind of pause and reevaluate what it is that we're actually going to try to sit down with that development partner, talk about what that looks like, and bring that back before we go in a different direction. So, yes.
Is there a motion to either approve, defer this item?
Madam Mayor, I would actually motion to defer this until we hear the larger parent agreement, also given that Councilman Johnston did not have appended, or appendix A, unless he feels comfortable moving forward. But I would motion that, defer this.
To when? To what? Like later today or to another date?
Could we motion to defer till later today, until we have an understanding of that conversation? And then, so could we just move this further in the agenda? And then, based on the conversation for item number one, that may change my opinion. So I would, I would move that we do this as item 1B.
Councilmember Johnston.
We're referring to the agreement with Petra, correct? Okay. I looked real quickly at Councilman Hoheisel's budget. I would just like to have a copy of it, so I'm okay with it. If we want to go ahead and approve it today, I would be fine with that.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just clarification, this is services rendered already and potential future services?
So let me see if I can help make the distinction a little bit, too, right? So the original contract agreement was for an amount for a scope of services and a scope of work, right? And this is going to be grossly oversimplifying this, right? But there's sort of two parts, right? There was all of the work that was conducted leading up until the end of December, right? All of the work with onboarding and community stakeholder engagement and real estate evaluation and a recommendation for real estate, right? That work was part of the original agreement. As part of the original agreement, there's also work that is associated with, once that real estate opportunity is secured and we're getting to closing and we're doing the, you know, the, the design and the schematics and the, right, all that kind of work. So there are still, there's still a lot of work to be done in the interim, right? So if I took that first agreement and I put it into two halves, they've done the first half, they've yet to do the second half, right? What happened was, was after December, as there was a change in course, right, to understand an alternative real estate opportunity, there were additional services rendered. And I have to take this a moment just for a second and say, this development team is incredible, right? They have gone above and beyond, and they've said, hey, look, our goal and objective is to serve the community and serve the city, right? And so they've taken it upon themselves to do a lot of things that have probably been above and beyond the scope of work, right? And they said, we get that, we just want to be a good partner, we want to try to achieve the goals and objectives of, of the community, right? And so, but if there is a chunk of time, right, post-December, now it's sort of January through March, April, where they were doing additional work that wasn't really initially contemplated because of this additional real estate opportunity and onboarding. For example, there was some conversations associated with bringing in additional capital investors around new market tax credits and those kind of things that the original team didn't have the expertise to really perform, right? And so when we say services rendered, there's still a lot of work to do. Once a real estate opportunity is identified, right, there's still a lot of work to do. They're prepared to do all of that work. There's just this sort of chunk of work that was not originally contemplated. That's what this addendum covers, which is why we feel confident to say that they have agreed that this will be the last, based on the trajectory of the real estate opportunity that's been identified. Now, if there's something else that presents itself, we'll have to kind of take a pause and reevaluate. But I don't know if that helps answer or explain.
I was just trying to get at it, if this work, was this work that was already done? Because I just think people should get paid for work that they did, so...
Yes, it was. It was work already done.
Well, I'm supportive of approving this today, because for me, it seems to be unattached. Work was already done, getting us to this point.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and you must have been reading my mind or taking my notes, because I agree. If this is work that's already been done, and the city of Wichita owes the Petra for the work that they've done, and, you know, we hope to continue to work with them as they have done a great job, I can't... they have done a great job, I can't see any reason to delay it. We're gonna have to pay it no matter what. If we delay it till after the next item or in three weeks, we still have to pay it. So I'm gonna be supportive of moving forward and paying the bill that we owe. Thank you.
Is the motion still forward?
The motion was withdrawn.
Motion was withdrawn. Is there a motion now, a new motion now?
I move to approve item seven.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. And again, one more time, this was for services already completed. In other words, there will not be additional dollars that we will have to pay moving forward regarding this new real estate opportunity.
Yes, assuming there's not some other real estate opportunity and we have to change course, but we've already agreed that if for whatever reason, let's just call it right, if for whatever reason the Park Elementary School project doesn't play out the way we anticipate and we have to go do additional work in identifying another real estate opportunity and all of the due diligence associated, what does a floor plan look like? To that point, if we continued down the path of Park Elementary School as we're contemplating it now, yes, no additional fees will be owed.
Thank you. Motion and a second, no further discussion. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six to one. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated June 10th, 2024.
Morning, Mayor, City Council, Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts for June 10th, 2024 convened with the following items. We have for purchasing, the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement, year three of three for SHI International Corporation in the amount of $983,163.79. We have the Laserfish Records Management System Annual Software Renewal for Galaxy Business Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $126,916. We have the NeoGov Human Resource and Application Tracking System Annual Software Renewal for Government Jobs Incorporated in the amount of $80,485.66. And we have the demolition and site clearing services. This is a requested contract extension for HD Mills &amp; Sons Incorporated and Brad Bird Corporation. Background information on this is that we are requesting to hold all pricing and items the same. We have historically completed bids on this. Low bid was primary, second low bid was secondary. We'd like to move to a request for proposal model to allow multiple contractors, to allow multiple interested parties to participate. And then from that process, once they're contracted, we will solicit informal bid opportunities. We currently do this with our trade contracts very frequently. We'd like to move to this model with our departments as well. This is how to become a vendor with the city. These are open requests for proposals out on the street today. And we have department representatives here and I would be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate you looking to move to that process for the demolitions and I think that allow more people to do business with the city of Wichita. But when you said that, are you saying that like you need approval from us or you all are just doing that?
Yes, we are requesting your approval because these items exceed $50,000 per year. So we want that buffer time to educate vendors, interested parties that have interacted with the city in the past, have a formal request for proposal process, formally put it out on the street, formally publish it in the local newspaper or identified source, and then work with our departments once those proposals come in to evaluate those proposals and then present that new recommendation to you as a new contract.
Okay. But I guess my question then for Jennifer would be, what would that look like as a motion? Is that staff's recommended action or do we have to repeat that paragraph that Josh just gave us?
Josh, if you'd restate that motion for council, that would be the best way to proceed.
Sure. Staff is just requesting a one-year contract extension. So as a part of the board and bids and contracts recommendation, this agenda items inclusion is the authorize the one-year contract extension.
Oh, okay. So we wouldn't have to say all the rest of it?
No. Sorry, that was just background information.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff? I see none. This is boards and bids, so there's no public comment. Is there a motion to approve? That is correct. Jennifer, is that correct?
We traditionally don't have public comment, but you certainly could.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of an option agreement with Unified School District number 259 for property located at 1025 North Main Street.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. I'm gonna run through the slide deck real fast, knowing and understanding that this was prepared in advance of the school district's Board of Education meeting last night. I'll get to that here in just a minute. So USD 259 is the current owner of the property located at 1025 North Main Street. The property consists of approximately 4.64 acres and also is consists of a two-story building which contains approximately 49,909 square feet. Here's the subject property here. The option agreement lays out a term of 180 days with an extension period of 90 days. The purchase price is a dollar. The option agreement then provides access in order for the city to continue to do their due diligence in trying to arrive at ultimately a decision on whether or not to purchase the property and includes a contingency. The contingency, the, and I'm just gonna read this just because I don't want to misrepresent this in any way, but, so the option term of that 180 days, right, commences upon the first of the following to occur. Number one, the Legislative Council waives the right to acquire the subject property. Number two, the legislature fails to timely adopt a concurrent resolution to acquire the subject property. Or three, the designated agency fails to take title within the time period provided. And again, that's where in addition to the 180-day exclusive option, city has the right to extend the option term an additional 90 days with written notice. Financial consideration, should the city exercise its option, the purchase price will be paid out of the Economic Development Fund. And legal considerations, again, disregard this legal consideration, or excuse me, the law department's reviewed and approved the option agreement as deformed, disregard the recommendation and the action. So last night, the USD 259 Board of Education voted to defer action on their half of the option agreement to June 27th, I believe. And so our recommendation is, in light of that action last night by the school district, that we also defer consideration and action on this item until July 2nd, our next regularly scheduled meeting thereafter. So with that being said, I'll stand for questions.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy?
Yes.
Are we still able, if we delay this today for a month, are we still able to get in the building to continue to do due diligence? I'm just, I mean, I understand our hands are tied here, but I just don't want us to get caught pushing this down so far, not being able to do some work in between now and beginning of July. And, you know, it's mindful that, you know, it's summertime now and we're going through the heat, but we really want to get this up and going by late fall, winter, at the very least.
So I'll answer that maybe two ways, right? Number one, according to the option agreement, that option agreement has to be entered into by both parties. So until both parties agree to enter into that agreement, we're kind of at a standstill. Now, to that point, there are some things that we can continue to do, right? There is some ongoing work that our development partner can continue to drill down into, right? We're gonna continue to engage the community. We have some some ongoing community engagement opportunities. In fact, I want to say June 20th, there is another open house where we're gonna continue to engage the community, give feedback and try to continue to fine tune, right, what the questions, comments, concerns are and how we might be able to respond to those. In addition to that, we are gonna continue to meet with service providers, right, to try to better understand and better define exactly what those operational procedures are, costs associated with, right? So there's some work that we're gonna continue to do regardless. But to maybe more formally answer your question, until both parties enter the option agreement, which as we've, the Board of Education acted last night that they're gonna defer their action until June 27th. I can tell you, one of the things that we're talking to them about is perhaps getting staff over to their offices to try to help answer some of the lingering questions that they might have, right, in advance of that June 27th meeting. We're still kind of trying to figure out exactly what that looks like, but until both parties enter into the agreement, we're kind of at a standstill.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Glasgow.
Two quick questions. First off, you know, we had talked about nominal fee. Can you just give the background of why we have to list a dollar as the purchase price?
Oh, sure. Yeah. So, and we sort of responded to this on Saturday as well as, you know, so as we, as as the school district took the formal action to shutter the school, a couple of weeks later, when we start working through whether or not this is actually gonna be a good opportunity, we get together with our development partner, we run through the real estate metrics on, so we start negotiating what those terms and conditions look like, right? The purchase price is something that we started talking through, right? And one of the suggestions was, you know, taxpayers originally paid for this project and this building to begin with, right? So any dollars that we would pay for the property would be taxpayer dollars as well, right? And so some of the suggestion was why, why should taxpayers have to pay twice? Obviously, the school district is taking that into consideration, right? The board and whether or not, given shortfalls, that they're amenable to that, right? But, and so that's why there is a transfer of the property that's contemplated, right? Despite, we've thrown around the term, you know, a donation, it's not a donation, although, you know, when you're conveying property for a dollar, you know, that was the context of the comments that might have been arrived at, it was being donated. But it's not necessarily being donated. The option agreement contemplates a transfer, a purchase of the property by the city from 259 for a dollar. But again, that nominal fee is basically just to to secure the purchase of the property. But again, we were trying to be mindful of the fact that taxpayers have already paid once for this and that any taxpayer dollars that would go to acquisition would be taxpayer dollars as well.
Jennifer, could you just give the legal context of why it's a dollar versus a donation or a...
One element of a contract is consideration and the consideration needs to be something of a measured value. A dollar here's a token amount, a symbolic amount of that consideration.
So it's a legal requirement?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one quick follow-up question to show, obviously, they've deferred the action. Is there an option to show good faith from the council that we continue with the option agreement and have an amended agreement if they suggest changes on the 27th after a workshop where we show good faith that we're still actively trying to pursue this, that we want to take the lead on this? And if that would happen, I mean, it only saves us about a week in terms of agreement, but then the agreement would take place on June 27th rather than July 2nd.
I mean, I think that's entirely up to the city council, right? I think you can achieve that in in a number of different ways, right? One might just be your voice here today, right? That you can express your your support and your intent and your desire to acquire the property, right, without necessarily formalizing a vote, right? As we were visiting with folks yesterday, right, we don't want the school district to necessarily feel any undue pressure, right, that a decision by this body today might put on them, right? And so, but with that being said, yes, we've also contemplated that a vote by this board, by the city council is only half of what's required to enter into the option agreement formally. And so to your point, you could do either, right? You could, hey, we understand that as a city council, while we're not voting on it today, that we are deferring it to July, if that is the the ultimate motion and decision, you can express your intent and desire just through your commentary. The alternative is, yes, you could vote to approve and and then that puts it wholly in their court to approve the other half of the option agreement. So you could do both.
Troy, Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I did have some conversations with folks at 259 last evening and it's, it was stated that they are deferring it until June 27th, but an option may be for them to have a special meeting. And if they do have a special meeting, that would expedite the process, you know, somewhat. And so it might be, and Jennifer, please, you can correct me when I'm wrong as always, but, you know, if we proceed with the delay, we could say defer to the July 2nd meeting or the first available meeting after them or, I mean, obviously, we'd say it better than that, but there's a way that we could make the motion that we're deferring it, waiting for them. So it'd be July 2nd or after their next meeting. Is that correct, Jennifer?
That's correct. That language is sufficient for a motion if you want to differ. I will say, if we do go ahead and vote on it today, we just want to tweak the recital B of the option agreement because it contemplated that this was already approved.
Can you say that one more time?
Do vote on it today. I think we just want to, from the bench, maybe tweak a recital number B.
May I ask a follow-up question then? So the reason that I'm probably gonna be in favor of delaying it and tell USD 259 votes on it is we have the development agreement with them. When they review it and make a vote, they may make changes. And so if we voted on this today and then they do approve it, but with changes, we would have to revote on it again with the changes. Am I correct, Jennifer and Troy?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, you know, my my position would be that we go ahead and vote to delay and give our friends at 259 an opportunity to do their due diligence. I understand a few of them felt like they didn't have enough time to prepare. And then as soon as they make their decision, then we can come back and make a vote. So that would be my my thought right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy, I know the answer to this, but I want the public to know that this is kind of a three-step process. 259 votes on it, we vote on it, then it goes to the state legislature. They have to basically not want it, not want to take possession of it. They're having a special session next week. Is it possible for them to take that action or not take it action and for us to proceed? So we don't have to wait until they come in session again next January.
So I'll answer that this way, and I'm just gonna read this again because I think it, I don't want to misrepresent this in any way, right? But so under KSA, hold on, under KSA 72-1489, right? Earlier this year, there was a Senate bill, Senate Bill number 387 was introduced on January 23rd, 2024. The Senate passed as amended Senate Bill 387 on February 21st. The House received and introduced on February 22nd. House Committee recommended a substitute bill. So if you go to the state legislature website, you probably won't find that SB 387. What you're gonna find is a subbill for SB 387 that was recommended on March 14th. The House passed as amended subbill SB 387 on March 27th. The Senate enrolled and presented to the governor. They enrolled on April 30th, presented to the governor May 6th. Governor approved, accept a line item veto of part of 2A on May 15th. This does not fall within 2A, right? So the language that was introduced as subbill SB 387 says that on and after July 1, 2024, 72-1439 is hereby amended to read as follows, subsection A. Within 30 days after the Board of Education of a school district adopts a resolution to dispose of a school district building pursuant to KSA 723216 and amendments thereto, such Board of Education shall submit written notice of intention to dispose of such building to the legislature. So the school district has to pass the resolution first, right? So if they're gonna defer until the end of June, we're probably gonna miss that legislative special session window, right? However... However, after July 1, right? So the next two parts, there's a subsection B, right? That talks about if the notice required is received during a regular legislative session, then this happens, right? But then the new part is if the notice required under subsection A is received when the legislature is in regular session, is not in regular session, then not more than 45 days after such notice is received, that the Legislative Coordinating Council may deny the legislative option or basically pass on acquiring the property. So based on the bill that was introduced in the session this year and was subsequently approved, once 259 passes a resolution, if that's what they so choose to do, then notice can be sent to the legislature. They don't have to be in session. The Legislative Council can receive that and act on that outside of a session. Hopefully that clarifies and answers the question.
I appreciate that for the public.
Yep.
Clarify that. The really pushes our timeline in September.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Pushes our timeline back.
So for whatever it's worth, we were going to have to wait until July 1 regardless, right? So whether had BOE, Board of Education, entered into the agreement yesterday or not, right? Or regardless of the action, they were going to have to wait until July 1 anyway. I mean, I guess they could have done the special session, right? But I think the conversation we've had thus far is they're probably going to have to wait until after January 1, July 1 anyway.
So we have to wait 45, they have to wait 45 days?
The Legislative Council might respond within three days, five days, seven days, right? They have 45 days to respond, correct? But they could respond as-
Could push it back to September.
Possibly, possibly. Well, mid-August, if, if that's 45 days, mid-August, yes.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, that was really complicated. Can you just say like bullet one, two, three?
Yep.
School board has to make a decision, then it comes to us, then it goes to the state, but they don't have to be in session to respond to us. All right?
You just said it.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure I understand what the KSA was like, ah, okay.
I can repeat that if you would like, but otherwise, yes, you just, yes. The, the Board of Education has to pass a resolution, and they have to take action, right? That's part of the option agreement, number one. But that's also what has to take place in order for them to reach out to the state, right? The second is, yes, the city would act, and assuming both of those parties agree to enter into the option agreement, then, at that point in time, then yes, notification will be sent to the state. And then depending on, so, which is what was in the staff report, right? That the option term commences upon the Legislative Council waiving their rights. So that was the first that we talked about. If for whatever reason Legislative Council does not act within the 40, right? 45 days, if the legislature fails to timely adopt a concurrent resolution to acquire the subject property, or the designated agent fails to take title, then that requirement will have been satisfied. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. Had to knock on some wood first, so I'm, I'm having a little deja vu, a little concerned. How will these delays impact our winter shelter?
So maybe circling back into Councilmember Hoheisel's original question, comment, right? We're going to continue down the path of doing the things that we can control, right? We'll continue to gauge the community, continue to fine tune what we think we understand as construction costs and construction estimates, operational cost, operational estimates. There's some things that we're going to continue to do regardless, right? Realistically, right? It's going to be close. We, we're having conversations with our development partner two and three times a week, right? How, what do we know now? What do we know now? What do we know now, right? And that, that, that shot clock is, is counting down. And so, but everybody is committed to trying to, you know, once we are given a green light and once we are through due diligence and once, again, assuming we can acquire the property, we're already having the conversations, what are the things that we can do now to set ourselves up so that we can stand up an emergency winter shelter before cold weather hits?
Okay, I would-
Sorry, I know that's not a clear answer, but-
No, it's, I'm just, I just remember having some of these conversations last summer, and then we ended up where we were, no fart of ours, you know? A lot of things happened, but would there, could there be a way that we express really strongly to the Legislative Council if 259 does agree to this and the council votes in support, that they make a decision really quickly so that we are not in that same situation again? I would hate to have another body taking their time trying to figure that out while we're sitting here waiting and ready to start working on the winter shelter, and we have to wait on that.
I will see what I can do.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. And Troy, I was remiss earlier in my, my question, I didn't say thank you. And thank you for all that your team has done, and also Sally with Housing and Community Services. I know this has been an enormous amount of time, a labor of love, and certainly shows where our heart is as a city, right? That we want to take care of our most vulnerable. So I'm, I was remiss in not doing that before, and, and please know how appreciative I am, and I think all of council is. My other question is, I was also going to say, can, can our council call their council? And, and, you know, see if we can have them be swift in this. So Troy, if, if USD 259 approves it, and then we approve it, and then it goes to the state, and let's say that, you know, they take their time, and it's 45 days, and it's mid-August, what has to be done for the facility for it to be emergency winter shelter? I think there's sprinkler systems that have to be done. I'm just curious how long, and it may not be, you know, the perfect situation that we want it to be, but we moved into our last emergency shelter pretty quickly, right? And we were able to pull that off. But is there an anticipated timeline of, you know, we think that, what all has to be done for it to be able to serve as an emergency shelter? And how long do we anticipate that could take?
I don't have the information available to you today.
Sure.
Right? That's a, that's a conversation that is continually ongoing. I can tell you, for example, one of the things that we've identified, right, is perhaps that the facility might need to be outfitted with a fire suppression system, automatic sprinkler system, right? And so one of the conversations we're having is, you know, what does the lead time on materials, right? Are there contractors available that can readily mobilize and provide the, and then what's that renovation timeline, right? And so we're, we're continually working with our development partner and their design team and their construction team to identify those opportunities and how that's going to impact the schedule. Again, I, I don't have the answers for you today, but yes, as that information comes available, and that's kind of what we've been telling the community, right, is as that information comes available, we'll be more than happy to share it, right? Once we can identify some real benchmarks, we'll be more than happy to share that.
And then my last question is, it's a little bit of asking you to editorialize, which, you know, I, is probably not fair, but if USD 259 passes and then we pass, do we have any expectation that the state wouldn't? Could we kind of start putting more wheels in place during that 45-day period or however long it takes? I mean, are we anticipating any problem, problems from the state, or is that just kind of another formality at this point? And I know I'm asking you to editorialize. I'm just curious if, you know, once the city, if, if USD 259 passes and if we pass it, can we go ahead and get some balls rolling?
So-
Maybe.
Let me, let me see if I can answer. I'm not aware of any specific use or desire that the state has for the property.
Perfect.
Which probably, but again, not that I'm aware of everything, right? But I'm not aware of anything that they're specifically looking to try and achieve, maybe that this building might assist them with. But again, with that being said, we have to kind of just let it play out.
Asking you an unfair question, but just hopeful that we can move as quickly as we can to protect our most vulnerable during the winter. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Glasgow.
This just popped up in my head because this would be another process that we have to follow as well. I don't know what the zoning currently is for Park, so I imagine that it would probably have to be rezoned as well at some point. So are we preparing that just to happen simultaneously with the other agreement as well, so that doesn't become a hurdle in the process?
Yeah, so we met with MAP, the Metropolitan Area Planning Department staff last week and have identified, yes, a zoning change will be required. And so there is a process by which, there's an application deadline, and there's advertising, and neighbor notification, and a presentation of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. And so one of the things that, obviously, we're going to communicate with the school district will most likely be to have them authorize us to pursue that, knowing that for whatever reason, right? If, if the school district decides not to authorize the transit, we can always withdraw that application at any point in time, but this can run parallel paths. But we have not had that conversation with the school district as of yet. But knowing and understanding, we, we do have a schedule and a timeline that has been laid out in front of us. And so now there's just the nuance of whether or not the school district will support and allow us to continue to go through that process, knowing that that could be withdrawn at any point in time. There's no additional undue pressure that would be placed on them to commence that process.
The zoning process takes approximately 90 days, so it would have to go through, maybe you would have to go through DAB.
Yeah, probably maybe, I'd love to say 45 to 60 days.
Okay.
Yeah. But it all depends on timing of when applications are submitted and when you can get advertising in. I'd like to say 45 to 60, but it could take a little bit longer.
I assume that to be a hurdle in the process as well.
Correct, correct.
Further questions? I have one question, and this is in conjunction with previous item and this item. There have been allegations of, we have lots of city-owned properties. Can you please address the real estate properties owned by the city of Wichita capable of having an emergency winter shelter? I'm sure that this was discussed last year when the last option was presented in October, one month prior to opening an emergency winter shelter, that it was one property that now has since been sold to another nonprofit. What other city-owned properties do we have that can house an emergency winter shelter? Or have any businesses, nonprofits, or churches donated anything to the city of Wichita?
Yeah, so to your point, yes, the, the previous emergency winter shelter, the facility has since been sold. And so, again, we, we promised the community, that neighborhood, right? That that was going to be sort of a one and done, and that was going to be the only time. And so even while emergency winter shelter was operating, we were in the throes of trying to identify whether or not there were other real estate opportunities for this upcoming winter season and beyond. Our development partner, as part of our development agreement, right? They went through a robust real estate evaluation metrics, right? And identified all the real estate opportunities that felt as though they might be a good fit for this. There's not a lot of options, right? Whether it's city-owned property, we, we don't have any, right? Whether it is privately owned, whether it's corporate or, or faith-based, there was a list of, there was about six properties that rose to the top of that list that, and again, it's not just, is there a property available, right? It's, we're trying to think about those long-term implications, right? And how that fits within the context of the broader scope, right? That we're not just trying to put a Band-Aid on it, we're not just, although that we are obviously mindful of every winter season, and as has been alluded to, every summer season, right? But being good stewards of taxpayer dollars and good stewards of taxpayer resources, right? We want to try and be targeted. And so as they went through that real estate evaluation, there were only a handful of properties that really presented themselves. And so to your point, there's not a lot of other options. If we have to go back to the drawing board, and again, not to try to put any undue pressure on anybody, not, if we have to go back to the drawing board, we have possibly some alternatives, right? But they're obviously, due to proximity to existing service providers, issues with transportation and logistics, right? It becomes exponentially more difficult to try and achieve the goals and objectives that we have set before you, right? And that you have set before us, actually. And so there are alternatives, but it becomes more expensive and harder to try and achieve those goals and objectives.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment regarding this specific agenda item. Are there any individuals here for public comment?
Hello, Mayor Wu and other city council members. My name is Cheryl Gollum. I'm in District 6. I've lived in both Riverside and Midtown. The reason I'm speaking today is because I attended the Saturday, June 8th meeting on the buying of Park Elementary and converting it into a multi-agency center. I'm here to speak out on the, out of concern and compassion for the residents that already live in this area. I'm opposed to the city converting Park Elementary into a multi-agency center at a no-barrier level. No barrier allows people to enter with no identification. No barrier allows people to enter and to leave the facility even if they're under the influence of drugs and alcohol. This multi-center agency is supposed to be open 24 hours a day with possibly 150 to 200 people, unless it's the winter months, and I've read where that would add maybe an extra 75 people. How is this safe for any neighborhood? This sounds like a very dangerous setup, and it's in the middle of a neighborhood, not on the edge of the neighborhood, not in a downtown area. This is where people live, eat, try to raise their families. And I believe this is not a setup that's very compassionate to the very people that were reminded at the June 8th meeting to be compassionate. On the June 8th meeting also, the Midtown residents were reminded that the homeless are human beings. I believe we already know that. And I believe that Midtown has been compassionate and giving to other human beings. The Midtown residents are full of love, compassion, acceptance, and patience. It's, these things have been there for a long time. If one drives the streets of Midtown, it has many, many social services, nonprofits, ministries, city services for the poor, housing for the poor and underprivileged, more than most neighborhoods in Wichita. Does the city really think that Midtown has not shared the blessing as well as the burden for compassionate causes? Midtown has definitely done great, and it's absolutely done more than its part. It's now time for another city area to share and help the city with a solution. Midtown is a historic neighborhood, but it is in decline. Many houses are boarded up. It is not a wealthy area, and many families make well below the average income of Wichita, just like the area at 21st and Grove. Midtown has a large and vulnerable and underrepresented Hispanic community. Park Elementary was 66% Hispanic, and Horace Mann is 88% Hispanic. The children that went to Park Elementary School have been displaced. Now the children that go to Horace Mann, 88% Hispanic, their ages 13 to 15, it's a middle school, they are four blocks, if you do this, they are four blocks from a facility- They are four blocks, if you do this, they are four blocks from a facility with no ID required and possible, possibly under the influence of drugs. That is one of the objections the people that live near 21st and Grove had for that facility at 21st and Grove, and they protested it and wanted it to leave. It was the same problem because it was close to a TOPS early learning center, and I think that's ages five through 12. These children are ages 13 through 15. So what is the difference here? The next thing I expect to hear is the facility also won't check to see if there are felons or sex offenders in the, housed in the facility. Once again, this is four blocks from Horace Mann, 88% Hispanic, 13 to 15-year-olds. This is not safe for the residents, the human beings that reside in this area and are trying to raise their children. Property values will decline. I've spoken with three different real estate agencies that have been in business for a long time. All three Realtors that I spoke to agreed that the values will go down once the facility is established. So if you live in Midtown and you need to sell because you're now afraid of your neighborhood and it looks nothing like it did before, good luck. And the mortgage rates, the national average is 7% as of yesterday, if you need to buy a new home. The small businesses in Midtown, which I spoke to yesterday, I canvassed a lot of the area and went to some of the small businesses. Some are largely Hispanic-owned. So I spoke to them and they said that they are afraid, that they are afraid that they will suffer, that they feel like they have no one to talk to, and they don't know what to do. I'm going to continue canvassing the area because this is not, this is the same problem that you all had at 21st and Grove, and that is why you promised it would be there temporarily. This is the exact same problem, different population. My amazement at the June 8th meeting was not only in the idea of putting a shelter in the middle of a neighborhood that's in decline.
Cheryl.
But the shaming, but the shaming that occurred to the residents that live in the neighborhood. They were told that these homeless people, and they are, are human beings, they were told to be compassionate, I will say this, and also to establish a neighborhood, to establish a neighborhood watch, which while they're feeding their children and trying to make a living paycheck to paycheck, it would be very hard to be looking out the window at nighttime and making sure no one is creeping up on your property. I want to say this about shame. This is the last thing I have to say. Shame is a psychological method to control people. Look it up. That is what it is. And it's used on populations to control them, and Midtown does not need to be shamed into accepting this problem that the city has. The city needs to use another facility. Thank you very much.
Public comment continues. Again, if everyone can be respectful, it's five minutes. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tracy Terrell. I live in District Six, own a business in Delano, so dealing with the homelessness issues that we've seen in the city has been quite a bit of a challenge on a couple of different fronts for my husband and I. I actually own a property at 1058-1060 North Water, which directly is the cul-de-sac that goes into the current teacher parking lot to Park Elementary. So I am actually a stakeholder in that very close area. I guess a couple of things, because I know from the meeting on Saturday, making sure that, I guess I was looking at it from a different perspective, but what are, have we identified the agency that's going to be doing the ongoing support of the MAC yet? Or is that still in work?
The entity operating the system is still, that is still in the works, and it's agencies?
Agencies, right. But I figured there would be like one overarching, okay. So that was one of the questions. The other thing is the, the area around Park, I guess from a vegetarian standpoint, as we start to look at the budget for this, taking into consideration the thoroughfare for Water Street because it is a cul-de-sac, so making sure that we kind of help with that traffic. The other thing that we also face now is the alleyways that are between the businesses that are on market, is it market? Anyway, water than the next street to the east, but there's an alleyway that runs in between there. And I know right now we have a lot of issues with homeless in the area camping back in that alleyway and causing disturbances for our tenants that live in that duplex there. So I guess making sure that we take that into consideration from a funding perspective. The other thing is too, is highly looking at is the, as we do this, the city needs to increase the park and recreation budget in order to account for the bike path traffic and the overall maintenance of that area, because the bike path does run on the backside of that. And as we can see from other areas, as that gets integrated in, we're going to need to make sure that that budget gets increased, that Park and Recreation can have the money to be able to take care of that and clean up the trash and the debris if it, or as it occurs. The other question that I had is, as we bring in mental health into the conversation, will Calm Care be involved in that multi-agency center? If it is, how much of this is the county going to be covering versus just the city? And so kind of looking at, trying to understand, like, should the county be involved in this? And then the last thing, we do know that the, the real estate term that we use, I just taught pre-licensed last week, so, but the real estate term that we use for that is called economic obsolescence. And we do know that it is, there is a potential impact for economic obsolescence for those neighbors, especially the ones directly around the park location. I would also like to see from a vegetarian standpoint, as we look at this, maybe it's an opportunity for their, if the functional obsolescence does occur, what type of property tax rebate could be provided to those homeowners that are facing that, something that's outside of their control? So I guess that's kind of my question to you all. Nobody wants it in their neighborhood, and, and I get that. And, and I can tell you from working with, going to a lot of the COC meetings, then to have the location announced, it was kind of a, oh, okay, it sounded better when it was going to be in somebody else's neighborhood, right? I get that. It does make sense from the service providers being around, making it easier for folks to be able to access things on bike, walking, all of those things. So while I am supportive of the park location, I just would like to see some of these other things taken into consideration because as a stakeholder, right now I have great families on my tenant, but what's going to be the rental rate once this goes into play, right? And then what type of families, you know, are going to be wanting to have their children living in an area that's going to be close to some of the things that the last lady talked about? So, thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Hey Tracy, I just want to say thank you for your very thoughtful comments in terms of how to enhance this possible solution regarding alleyways, regarding parkways, regarding traffic count. I think those are great suggestions to figure out how we can enhance this if we do move forward with this. And so if you have any other suggestions, I think everybody on the council is willing to hear them, and I think those are things that we should be taking into consideration when we're looking at this as well. I do think this is a good plan, and, but we can also figure out ways that we can mitigate this and mitigate concerns, and I think these are some really good suggestions. So thank you for offering those.
Councilmember Johnston.
Tracy, I have comments, and thank you very much for coming forward. I'm on the Homeless Task Force, I'm on a subcommittee of provider coordination.
Right.
So we've dug and tedd have many, many, many meetings on how do we do this, who's going to be involved, and definitely Calm Care will be involved. It'll be really multi-agencies, multiple agencies all working together and, and working on the, the governance structure of that, you know? I don't think anybody is satisfied with how things are now, and so we had need to do something different. Just working on that, and all the providers are in, on the, at the table, working on that.
Oh no, for sure, absolutely. I mean, I've been to enough of those meetings to have been able to see, and it is exciting from that regard.
Yeah, but I, I think everyone can agree that sleeping on the streets and in alleyways along buildings is not an option, a good option for people. I think we need a place for them. I think that'll help business too, your business, if you don't have that in front of your business. So definitely working on it. One thing you might point out is that, that agents, that's, if it is parked, it will have 24/7 security. So that will be something. And also that people will not be allowed in there with drugs or alcohol. So if they're going to leave, they're not going to be high or, or drunk. So appreciate your comments very much. Still come to the meetings, 20th, there's a, there is a Homeless Task Force meeting at 3:30 at the library, and there'll be a forum after that. So if you can come to both of those, that would be great. There's a lot of input from the audience in those too, so thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any more individuals who would like to speak? I see none. We'll bring you back to the bench.
All right, so it's back to us for discussion, I suppose. I, I think it seems like the will of the body is to delay this item until the July 2nd meeting. So I will go ahead, and if everybody's okay, make that motion to delay this item until July 2nd.
Motion and a second. Councilmember Johnston.
I, I agree with you, Councilman Hoheisel. If the school board has a special session and we can move it up, I think there should be language that we'd be able to move it up from July 2nd.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a friendly amended, amendment there to Jennifer.
Thank you, Councilmember. How about I move to defer this item until July 2nd unless USD 259 School Board has a meeting before that time, and we then would defer this item to the first available meeting after.
The first available meeting after the school board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, do I, do, should I run, run that through again or just say?
If you're okay with it.
Yeah, I, I move to defer this item until the July 2nd meeting unless there's a school board meeting before then that this item is acted upon, and then the first available meeting after.
Perfect. Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just appreciate everyone that came to speak today, to ask questions, share their concerns. I know we still have a lot of work to do, questions to answer, concerns to address. We're still having conversations with the Board of Education, but I appreciate everyone that has taken time to come here. It is really important to me to listen and get feedback. I appreciate all my colleagues' questions. And Troy, thank you so much for all of the direction that you've been helping us and try to help us make sense of this really complicated problem. So we'll be in support. I just wanted to offer a few comments.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you for your comments, Vice Mayor. I also will be in support. I was just going to make a housekeeping comment, just FYI to put it on our radar. If USD 259 does hold a special meeting before their, you know, right now scheduled June 27th, we can also schedule a special meeting so that we wouldn't have a delay per city ordinance, the mayor or four city council members can call a special meeting. So just if we wanted to expedite this, we could also consider that option. So thank you.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the floor. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of an amended and restated operations and management agreement with the car park.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. So I'll provide a little bit of background, try to keep it brief, but the city has entered into various parking management agreements with the car park over the years, including as early as 2010, another one in 2016, another one in 2022. Simultaneously, right, the city has continued to identify various goals and objectives with more robust, comprehensive parking and multimodal plans. Back in 2017, there was a grant agreement with WAMPO that started that process. Over the next 18 months, there were six focus group meetings, six steering committee meetings, six technical advisory committee meetings, four work sessions, two open houses. There was an even, there was even an online public survey in which there were 900 responses received, which is, if anybody has been in and around, that's a, it's a really good response, a really good response rate to a public survey. Unfortunately, between 2020 and 2021, global pandemic sidelines those efforts. However, in 2022, that steering committee is sort of reappointed, recommissioned. The plan, the draft plan at the time then is presented to 11 different advisory committees and boards, all providing input, all making recommendations to advance the plan. Subsequently, between October of '22 and February of 2023, the plan is approved by the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and approved, recommended for approval by each of the six district advisory boards, all culminating with city council endorsing the 2019 Parking and Multimodal Plan in March of 2023. So since March of 2023, we have continued to try and begin identifying how to implement the strategies that were identified in that 2019 Parking and Multimodal Plan. So endorsement of the plan provides a policy framework by helping assist in how to prepare for better management of the city's parking and mobility assets. So the following couple of bullet points, right, were those implementation strategies that were identified in that plan, I'm going to highlight just a, a few of them here, but utilizing technology to improve the customer experience, improving parking enforcement and parking enforcement operations, improving cost recovery for the regular operation of the Parking and Multimodal Fund, improving cost recovery for repairs and maintenance of parking assets, communicating clearly about parking and transportation information to the public, and obviously using those strategic investments for the benefit of the community. So additionally, the plan really kind of starts spelling out some of those specific tactics in trying to implement. So first and foremost, authorize the Transportation Department to implement new parking technologies, including upgrading smart parking meters, introducing things like license plate recognition equipment for enforcement, also authorizing the Transportation Department to set or adjust parking management policies, including new time-limited parking zones, parking permit program zones to meet the city's targeted parking peak occupancy rates. the city's targeted parking peak occupancy rates. So as part of us going out and trying to continue to communicate and find support for the implementation, we went before the Downtown Wichita Board, presented, you've probably all seen my presentation around free parking is not free, right, and we've done that. Downtown Board recommended continuing to try and implement the strategies identified in the plan. Additionally, we knew and understood that one of the things that we were going to have to do is revise some of the codes and ordinances, right? So back in January of this year, back on January 2, we presented code amendments, particularly as it relates to Charter Ordinance 237 and Title 11, generally referred to as cities parking and traffic ordinances. We amended the definition of parking meter zone, disauthorized independent contractors hired by the city to enforce the city's parking ordinances, required non-employee parking control officers to carry insurance. We appointed the city traffic engineer to establish and designate no parking in our restricted parking meter zones, designate times, dates, time limits allowed, and the appropriate fees for parking in parking meter zones, which has led us to today, right? And so the last part of beginning to really try and start to implement the strategies that have been identified is to amend the existing parking operation and management agreement with our parking operator, the car park. By implementing these strategies, some of the financial considerations, we anticipate that this would generate approximately $3.3 million annually, beginning in 2025. On the expense side, the current management fee is about $321,000 a year paid from the Downtown Parking Fund. However, the current management fee only provides limited operation and management for a few select parking facilities within the downtown area and meter collection and the same. Under the new amended and restated agreement, which is before you all today, the car park will provide comprehensive operation and management of all city-owned parking lots, structures, facilities in downtown Wichita. They'll also be responsible for oversight of the acquisition, installation, and maintenance of all new and existing parking equipment within that same subject area. And lastly, they'll be responsible for enforcement of our parking codes across the entire downtown parking management ecosystem. Similar to previous agreements with the car park, the cost for the acquisition of the infrastructure and the equipment will be borne by the car park and then reimbursed by the city as part of those monthly reimbursements from the city's Downtown Parking Fund over a five-year amortized period or rate. So included in the agenda report, we have a schedule that shows what can be anticipated to be paid out in 2024, '25, '26, '27, '28, '29, and '30 through the term of the agreement. The law department's reviewed and approved the amended and restated agreement as to form. It's recommended the city council approve the agreement, subsequent budget adjustment, and authorize the necessary signatures. With that being said, while the car park has local representation, their ownership group is not located here, but they are available online. They have joined us virtually, and they are here to answer any questions that you may have directly for them. Otherwise, I'll stand for questions.
Questions for staff, starting with Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy, that was a lot.
Thank you.
But I know, and you know, because I've talked to you about it a million times, there are questions and concerns from businesses, and today's item is just the equipment slash portion. It's, there's still a lot to come, lots of conversations and education pieces, correct?
Correct.
I don't want anybody to see this and like completely freak out.
Does that physical rollout look like? That's the second one that this technical advisory group has been working on, right, is how many meters are we going to have to acquire? And it's not just maybe individual meter heads, it's dual meter heads, it's multi-meter kiosks, it's PARC equipment, right? It's going to be all of it. And being able to strategically identify where that equipment is going to go, what are the installation strategies, so on and so forth, right? So there will be the physical rollout of this. And then the third part, which has been huge, is communication, right? So this technical advisory group, since the beginning of January, has met twice a month. We meet second and fourth Fridays or something like that, right? And we meet twice a month, and we continue to meet. We've then rolled all of those conversations up into a steering committee. That steering committee has folks who are representatives of various groups, and in fact, we've been in conversation with some folks even as late as late last week to try and add folks to that steering committee, right, to be representative of other groups that may have a vested interest in how this is going to impact the users and the end users, right? And so we've already had one steering committee meeting. So basically, we took the approach of the technical advisory group, the work that was commenced under Q1 would be rolled up into that steering committee and then lay out what can be expected in Q2. So that meeting was held early April. So the next steering committee meeting will be in July, and that'll be, hey, here's the work that we showed you that we were going to do in Q2, here's the work that we did in Q2, and what you can expect to see in Q3. And then there will be another steering committee meeting at the end of Q3, right? Here's the work that we did under Q3 and what you can expect in Q4. And then ultimately, currently, the plan is to, over the course of Q3 and Q4 of this year, right, the equipment will be ordered, start to install it, we'll continue to engage business owners, residents, patrons, I mean, we're talking about showing up at public events, maybe there's a tent with an actual piece of equipment, right, showing people how to interact with the equipment, all of the equipment from what will, you know, we heard loud and clear that we want that equipment to be, you know, coin operated, bill operated, where appropriate, credit card, right? We want to improve the user experience, right? That was one of the initiatives that was set out in that, we want to improve the user experience, improve the customer experience by creating flexibility in ways that folks can pay, including mobile app. We've already had conversations with some of our mobile vendors, for example, Park Mobile, which is already being used in our community, right? And so we're having all of those conversations at a technical level. We're rolling that up into the steering committee, and that's going to continue, right? There's got a robust plan that our comms team is going to present at that next sort of steering committee meeting in July. Once that steering committee says, yep, we also support and endorse, or maybe they'll say, hey, have you thought about this out or the other? We'll incorporate that. And then over the course of Q3 and Q4 of this year, as we are continuing to roll out installation of the equipment and feedback from, we'll continue to educate the community on what the implications of this are, with the goal and the intent, as we've identified right now, is for this system to go live, so to speak, January 1, 2025, which is why we've kind of projected the revenues commencing in 2025. Right now, the system will continue to operate as it is. In fact, what you may see is a number of meter heads being removed, some of the signage being removed, right, as we continue to prepare for, this is going to be a fairly large undertaking, right, by our operator to, again, acquire this equipment, get it all installed. The hope is to try and get it installed late October, early November, get it tested, and make sure that it's up and running and operable, so that when we sort of go live, January 1, 2025, we're not having technical issues with implementation. That's probably way more information than you were looking for, but I was hoping to kind of demonstrate that there will be significant community engagement. This contract amended and restated agreement today just allows our contractor to begin that acquisition and installation of equipment, as we've at least identified today.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Troy, I know you and I have talked about some of my concerns.
Yep.
Specifically regarding outsourcing of enforcement. So is this the first time that we've had non-city employees enforce city ordinances and codes?
As it relates to parking enforcement, yes. As far as other enforcement of other codes and ordinances of the city, I might have to kind of defer to some of the other departments. But outsourcing enforcement of codes and ordinance of the city is not unheard of. So for example, Car Park, and I don't have the list with, I thought I brought the piece of paper with me today, but even the Car Park enforces parking operations in other communities across the nation. If my memory serves me correctly, like Scranton, Pennsylvania, Atlanta, Georgia, Estes Park, Colorado, there's a number of other cities that, so these folks are no stranger to enforcement of city codes and ordinances. But I know, for example, the city of Wichita, you know, we have an agreement with the county to enforce building codes, right? So there are county employees who are enforcing building codes. So there may be some nuances around, so I can't say carte blanche that we've never done anything like this, but as it specifically relates to parking, yes, this will be the first time.
I know we had talked to suggestion of these individuals either taking an oath of office or something to adhere to constitutional rights and authorities as well, because they would be enforcing our laws. Did legal have the chance to review that and see if that was a consideration or option as well?
Yes, we had an opinion for, I'll let them weigh in.
If I could, Councilmember Glasscock, as Sharon makes her way to the podium. The city, decade, decade and a half ago, had an accessible parking program where we worked with outsiders, volunteers, agencies, worked under the purview of the police department to do parking enforcement for handicap, accessible parking. And Sharon's very familiar with the program and can kind of give you some information as to how that worked. But to your point, it was under the purview of the Wichita Police Department. There was a review process that was in place.
In response to your first question on enforcement, I've been here 33 years. This is the first time that we have allowed a non-city employee to actually issue the citation. Dante is correct. We had the SNAPET program. That program worked on volunteers who went out, gathered the evidence, and then presented that evidence to WPD to issue the citation. MABCD, well, planning also has a program where individuals can go and pick up signs in the right of way, which is a type of enforcement. However, that requires those people to have a class and instruction by city staff. We do have non-law enforcement. People issue citations, and MABCD health officers, those while they're city or county employees, they are not law enforcement officers, for lack of a better term. So this is the first time that we would have given the opportunity to directly file a citation, as far as I know.
Thank you for that context. I'll probably have more in terms of discussion regarding that as well. The next, I probably have two more questions. I know Councilman Hoheisel's on there, so I'll let him answer some questions as well. Is there a quota in terms of how many tickets the company is expected?
No.
No, okay.
No, and I've worked.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't.
With the contract people, no, there's not a quota, and Troy can correct me if I'm wrong. They do not receive any of the revenue from those citations. The plan, and there'll have to be some sort of interface developed between car parks and the municipal court, but those tickets would go to court. The revenue is going to go through court, so they're not going to get a bonus or anything. They, as part of the agreement, do have to come and make, be made available to come and testify if those are contested.
Okay. And then last question I have regarding enforcement, in terms of the appeal process, do they appeal through the city, not through Car Park?
If it is a parking citation that's issued under our ordinances, it would come to us through municipal court.
So they would continue the appeal process through municipal court?
Yes. As far as your question on an oath, my concern would be is that these people are not city employees. They're going to be an independent contractor. So if we start making those kind of demands or requirements, I think we get closer to having an employee relationship rather than an independent contractor relationship.
Don't our, like, DAB appointments, other appointments to boards and commissions also take a, an oath in some capacity?
Yes.
Okay.
But they would, but they would be agreeing to that appointment.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I think that that's something that Troy and his people may have talked to Car Park about.
Okay.
But I don't know that we can necessarily require that as part of the contract.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, if I can maybe continue, right? So in cooperation with the law department, I'll kind of just touch on, there's a number of provisions within the agreement that begins to start responding to the enforcement, right? So under Section 4A, the contractor must provide training, trained, qualified, competent, and experienced personnel. Section 5A specifically enumerates professional standards of conduct, including nondiscrimination, control over conduct, demeanor, appearance of its employees, and compliance with law, rules, and procedures. Under Section 7F5, there's a requirement that the contractor must ensure initial and recurrent training of its employees on different topics, including customer service, customer experience, dispute resolution, safety training, and city parking code compliance and parking enforcement, which is required to be held upon hiring and recurring not less than quarterly. So one of the things we talked about was our law department offers up training, sort of unofficial, but training nonetheless, to city staff and law enforcement, right? So perhaps there's an opportunity to require that those employees who are going through oriente, orientation may have to initially take a class or whatever with our law department to make sure that everybody is mutually working. And then obviously, they have to provide ongoing quarterly continuing education, and so we can require, show us that evidence of certificates of completed continuing education, those kind of things, right? There are a number of other sections. 7S specifically addressing parking enforcement services in accordance with the provisions of the Wichita Municipal Code, state and federal law, placing an affirmative duty on contractor to require its employees to file tickets in municipal court, appear and testify in court, you heard that from, so whether it's a city employee writing the citation, or whether it's an operator, third-party agency writing this, once that citation is entered and it's put in the court system, that process remains the same regardless of who's actually writing the citation. Section 9D writes reserved to city, including right to make final decision on when services may be provided by the contractor or city employees. You heard a little bit about that, about that appeal process. All their job is to, are you in violation of the parking code? Here's your citation, right? And then it goes into the system. And then Section 15C requiring daily reports and details of number of citation issued and impoundments, so on and so forth. So we felt as though it was a pretty robust definition of what their roles and responsibilities are, what their limitations on enforcement of parking codes and ordinances within the subject area.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. On the topic of the impoundments, are we going to go through the normal city process in as terms of reaching out to the tow companies to come and take a car away that may be immovable, or?
Yes.
Sitting in the spot for a while?
That's the next set of ordinances. It's going to come back to you all. We are looking at a process where the parking officer or Car Park could notify, much like private property owners do now, that I'm going to tow a car from my location, and that notification would go to the police department. Hasn't been determined yet whether those tows will be handled under the existing impound contract, because that would take some negotiation, or whether it will be treated just as a notification to the police department and treated like a private property tow, for lack of a better analogy.
Yes, so to be decided.
Oh, we're working on those, and we were going to get this piece done first, and then you'll see me again in a couple weeks, probably with an impound ordinance change.
Well, I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Also, Troy, just want to make sure this is out there. Car Park is not in charge of the fees, the fee rates.
That's correct. All of fees, rate structures, where to charge fees, where, that's all going to be managed, recommended through our traffic engineer and our engineering department and the city. The city controls all the rates and pricing.
Okay, yeah, that's one of the big concerns I have, and I'm glad to see that we're not giving control of that away. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that our Car Park individuals are online right now.
So they were.
We're there.
Okay, hey, great, they got back on.
Yep, we're back.
I had a question. I had a question regarding, thank you for joining us virtually. Troy mentioned Scranton, Pennsylvania, Atlanta, Georgia, Estes Park, Colorado, as places where implementation has happened. I wanted to know what have been some of the challenges faced by those communities as they implemented, or any of the successes.
Steve, you want to take that one real quick?
Yes, hi, Steve Hernandez with the Car Park. I think one of the most important aspects of implementing this type of program is to have an effective stakeholder engagement plan, and that is something that we have put in place with a variety of meetings that Troy and his team have scheduled over the course of the coming months. The most important thing that we can do is to educate the public and the benefits of managed and paid parking, and making sure that they understand the benefits of the program as to create turnover. And it's not necessarily a revenue generating opportunity. It's all about creating a parking mobility plan that can support the local business community and residents.
So, I think to summarize, his main challenges that we've seen is education of the public, whether it's through getting the notice out there initially and then continuous education throughout as you roll out the actual program.
I will ask Troy to come back up here. One of the biggest pieces, as I just mentioned regarding, or heard regarding challenges, is education of the public, that this is not a revenue generating opportunity despite the fact that there will be revenue generated, $3 million. Can you explain why we are needing some of these dollars? I believe a couple of months ago, we talked about maintenance of parking lots and parking structures, parking in general, and that maintenance does cost money.
Yeah, that's correct. So, there's a, there's a couple of different, and I kind of put them in two camps, right? There's this preventative measure in which cities try to stand up these systems, right? And then there's this proactive, on the preventative side, right? Yes, we, we have deferred maintenance in a number of our existing structures. We have issues with loitering and illicit activity and graffiti, and the laundry list goes on and on and on, right? And so, one of the challenges we have is our parking fund because of the lack of robust sort of revenue structure, right? We're unable to really respond to that ongoing maintenance. And so, if you kind of look at our, our parking fund over the last several years, and if you look into the trajectory of it in the future, it's not sustainable, right? We've, we've got to do something different if we're going to try and continue to build on the momentum and the energy and the excitement and the investment we're seeing in our downtown, right? There's issues around safety and cleanliness that are, one of our goals and objectives is to start responding to that, too. We're starting to respond to deferred maintenance, starting to respond to cleanliness and safety. We want to improve the user experience, not just with the interaction with paying for that parking, right? But just the interaction of parking downtown. We want it to be safe, and we want it to be clean, and we want folks to be able to enjoy that experience, right? That comes at a cost. So, the other camp is that proactive approach, right? So, by implementing these strategies and trying to balance occupancy rates, right, with rate structure, you adjust rate structure to achieve occupancy rates. Industry standard Italia, and this is in the Parking and Multimodal Plan, the goal is to try to achieve 85% occupancy, right? In an 85% occupancy environment, right, a user can reasonably expect to see one to two to three available spaces along any block face, right? Or within any sort of parking lot or structure. Right now, as you'll see in the study, and I know I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but right now, we have 60% of our downtown is, real estate is either vacant or some sort of surf.
Conversation that I would like to have extensively at another time, when businesses, basically going back to, we have so many parking lots that are not utilized, and like you said, they're not free. So, they are prime real estate that are being wasted, so to speak, but also I think some of the businesses we require to have so many parking spaces, and then they're not being used. So, I would like to have a conversation about what that looks like another time. But I appreciate your comments because they basically echoed what I wanted to.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much, Troy. We will now open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Twyla Purity Polo Club, District 1. I just have some points after listening to the presentations for you may want to consider or reject. One point is, it seems like this process, information process and sharing with DABs started in 2019. Dang, that feels like a long time ago. My guess is technology and so forth has changed. I suppose a lot of people that were on the DABs at that time are no longer on the DABs. Certainly not to delay this, but perhaps it makes sense for the DABs to hear about this again in its new iteration. On Slide 28, there was a reference to a board or committee. I wasn't very clear, I didn't clearly understand. It felt like they might have a lot of authority, but not much community input, so I was a little curious about that. The revenue question, certainly, it was, it got a little confusing on Slide 34. I know Troy went through that quickly. There's some revenue, there were expenses, kind of the net revenue wasn't real clear. There have been references to maintenance and maintenance of the parking lots. I haven't, I didn't really hear much about the expense of maintaining and replacing meters and kiosks and how much has been budgeted for that, or that money's going to come from, I guess it's going to come from the revenue. Let's see, contract deadline. And then just talking about parking, you guys probably don't have to use the little city parking meter, or not meter, but that system to get in and out of City Hall. It's tricky. It's tricky as heck. You can't always get people when you need them. It's a little confusing to use. So, these new kiosks, I hope there's opportunities for folks to look at them, use them, and then get feedback. Like, no, that's confusing for me. I'm a pretty smart gal. I come in, too, I get my little ticket, but it also says, scan here, but the arm's already up. I scan it sometimes, I don't scan it sometimes, but that's the instruction on the little device where you get your tickets. So, it's kind of confusing. And who's going to handle complaints? You know, complaints on the folks that are issuing the citations and so forth? Are those going to come to the city? What if there's complaints of discrimination? I mean, how will the city learn about these complaints? When you talk about Car Park, they gave a list of cities where they have contracts. I don't know if the, anybody from the city has called those communities to ask for references, but another question might be, what cities have canceled their services and why did they cancel those services? And that will finish my comments. Thanks for your time.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. We always appreciate your community engagement. I just wanted to address one of the things that you mentioned, talking about, this started in 2019, and it was interrupted by the pandemic. And so, you know, we had to prioritize work that was being done, and this was still on our radar, but something, some things had to take precedence over this homelessness and, you know, dealing with the pandemic and all of those kinds of things. But it did come back to the DABs in 2023. And so, from October 2022 until February of 2023, I think there were multiple engagement opportunities, including coming back to all the DABs with the refreshed plan now that the steering committee was reappointed. So, I know you had lots of other questions, but that was the first quick one that I can answer, so thank you.
I'm here on behalf of BikeWalk Wichita. And just, I hadn't intended to speak, I was actually concerned about this when I came in, but I think it's been a great presentation and some, some great questions from the council members that cleared up a lot of things. I just wanted to emphasize a couple of different things. Actually, I think the way that it's been explained, I'm in favor of going forward with this. I was a member of the steering committee that worked on it, on the original, on the parking plan, and I think a lot of the points that have been made, partly in answer to your questions and partly otherwise, need to be emphasized. The point that the Car Park representatives made about this not being about revenue generation, but about managing the, the parking downtown, I think is important to try to assure that there be adequate parking downs, downtown at the places that, that you want to park. And that requires a, a system of management, not just slapping parking meters everywhere and charging, you know, $10 flat fee for it, but the downtown area so that there should be some sort of commitment. I don't know, you know, whether, how strong it should, needs to be, but some sort of commitment that the revenue generated be put back into the downtown area, not just for repairs and maintenance, but to enhance the downtown area, to make it more attractive, to have reason for people to come downtown. Speaking, speaking of which, like I said, apologize, I didn't have all this written out in advance, so a little disjointed here. But one of the reasons that BikeWalk Wichita is interested in this is that our mission is to transform Wichita into a more livable, accessible, and connected city by making biking and walking safe, equitable, and appealing. And the parking plan itself says that one of the goals of the parking plan is to make the downtown area more attractive, more appealing, and more walkable, essentially because it's a lot more appealing and a lot more productive to have some productive businesses downtown rather than empty parking lots. So, that's our, our interest in it. So, using the revenue, not focusing on revenue, but on the parking management, using the revenue that is generated to maintain and enhance the downtown. And then, the third concern I had was that this contract would be handing over the, essentially the management of the parking to, the policy decisions to a third party. And I think Councilman Hoheisel asked about that. Apparently, they're not going to be able to dictate or decide where the meters are located, what charges are on the meters, and importantly, for things like an open streets event, you know, not be able to say, oh, well, you can't do that because that's eating into our, our revenue. So, I think that's, that's important to do. So, as I said, based on the explanation, I think it's, going in the right direction is consistent with the parking policy. Did have one, one other area of concern. I've tried to download the, the contract, the actual contract several times, and the city website wouldn't let me do it all weekend long, so I haven't actually looked at the contract. But as I said, the explanation sounds very consistent with the plan, so we'd be in favor of it. Thank you.
Any further comments? I see none? I'll bring, oh, sorry. Councilmember Glasscock. Can I bring back Troy to answer just a couple of questions that have been posed? One in particular is the replacement of meters, so the equipment. Can you talk about the cost of that?
Yeah, I'll bring you back to the slide deck. So, in response to the equipment, as you can see here under that amortized cost column, right, it's about $2.5 million. That equipment will begin to be ordered almost immediately, and again, installed across the third and fourth quarters of this year, which is why we won't necessarily have to start reimbursing the Car Park until January of 2025, but it's a five-year amortization of that about $2.5 million worth of equipment. So, that's why we've separated out the management fee from the amortized cost of the reimbursement for the equipment. So, the actual management fee for the purposes of operations, management, enforcement is that, that management fee. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the bench now for further comments. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor Wu. First off, I would just say 99% of this, I'm totally fine with. I think it's a great plan. I believe that free parking is not free, and I believe that we should hold that from the bench. I have no problems with our conversations about price, meters, management, or maintenance. The only concern I have is regarding enforcement. First off, I believe that there's accountability aspect when you are a public servant and you work for a government entity versus a private entity. The public, or the private entities are not held to the same accountability in the public sphere as individuals that work for the city or the county to do concerns. I have deep concern that this is setting a precedent of allowing private companies to act like public authorities. And, you know, where does it stop? Does that mean we outsource aspects when it comes to animal control? Does that mean we outsource aspects when it comes to citations for, you know, speeding enforcement? And so, I have the question of the, you know, the constitutionality and the traditional role of government is the enforcement of laws, not private entities. And so, that's why it will be a no vote today, not because I believe that we need to reform our parking system. I do, I do believe we need to enforce our parking system and improve our parking system, but I have questions regarding the role of enforcement, and I believe that should solely be in the role of city employees and the city government.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just one request, should this pass, if there is a way to get simple, simple explanation of some of this on like a flyer. Just came to mind, talking about some of this when I was at the barber shop, there was questions about, wow, the city's really doing this? And I thought that would be great places to put up informational flyers. So, as we get to a point where we talk about what the plan looks like, what payment may look like, the different options, like maybe having something like that, that we can put in barber shops and beauty salons to help communicate with folks.
And if I may, so as part of our communication strategy, here's my teaser. It won't just be a flyer. We'll have flyers, it won't just be a flyer. We're standing up an entire website dedicated to Park Wichita.
I will add one comment in regards to what Councilmember Glasscock mentioned. I know that when we have been talking about enforcement, class with law department, would that be maybe an additional item within the classes that these individuals would have as upholding, obviously, our public servant role and taxpayer dollars? And reminding them, again, of the importance of what we're trying to do is not to gain revenue, but simply to recoup costs to maintain properties that, again, are for the public good. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and just kind of a follow-up from the communication plan. I'm, I'm not a communication expert, I leaned into the smart people who are, right? But just one thought along the lines of Councilmember Johnson. I think that we've heard in the past already, some people who come downtown not as frequently are the ones who are the most concerned about this, right? And, and oftentimes, the reason they come down is because they're enjoying our performing arts. And so, it might even be worth asking our partners within the performing arts field if they would be willing to put a link to our new website on their website, so when people are purchasing their tickets, they also have the information. they also have the information readily available. It's just a thought. But from what we've seen so far, the people are the most concerned about this. And the changes are the folks who just come down occasionally for different opportunities in our core. Thank you.
Any further comments? Councilmember Glasscock.
I would be interested in offering a motion to add to this agreement under item F. Let me see what the larger number is. It'd be page 14, 15, regarding training. That it says employee training shall include at minimum the following, and then it lists seven different items. And item number eight, regarding some aspect of constitutionality, law enforcement, regarding some level of an oath of office. I would be interested in adding that to this agreement. That's not a motion for me to approve the agreement. That's just a motion for me to add that to this agreement. Is that possible in terms of legal, how we draft that up?
It would be a negotiated term to the contract. I think that's up to Troy to discuss.
Yeah, so I, I think we can, I mean, I've already had the sort of informal conversation with the car park, and they were amenable to that, right? And so I think we can try to maybe negotiate some very specific language and make sure that our legal team and their legal team agrees with the language. And then, again, if it's an opportunity to introduce that as part of a future amendment, or we could certainly look at that. Yep, yeah, we're amenable to it.
How would this change during a motion with the additional item number E?
Can make that motion and direct staff to pursue that negotiation. Bring it back as an addendum.
And can I make that motion to add him to, let's say, item F, number eight? And then, again, not the whole contract approval, just adding that to this agreement before we vote on the contract approval? That'd be two separate votes?
If you want to do it that way, you can do that way.
So I would make a motion that we, to section seven, item F, and then adding a point G once in negotiations. And we can bring this back regarding constitutionality, regarding enforcement, training. And I would leave up to legal counsel determine maybe the specifics of what that would look like.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Now coming back to the item at hand, which is the entire entirety of the contract. Is there a motion to approve that?
I move to approve the amended contract.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six one. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
PUD 2024-7, zone change requests in the city from GC General Commercial to PUD Planned Unit Development to permit the use of site for outdoor display sale, but allow a gravel surface and adjust screening requirements located on the north side of West Kellogg within one half mile south of 135th Street West.
Good morning. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department, here to present this one. For this case, as you heard, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property from GC General Commercial District to Plan Unit Development, which is custom zoning. This item is being heard today because protests have been received against the application. In terms of the request, the applicant has received notices for violations of the Unified Zoning Code and is requesting the rezoning in order to come into compliance. The requested custom zoning would provide exceptions to screening requirements and paving and surfacing of off-street parking. The applicant has also indicated they are requesting the rezoning so that they can develop the northern portion of the property for self-storage. In terms of the properties, you can see here on the graphic, the site is generally located north and west of the intersection of Kellogg and 135th Street. A subject site consists of two parcels, is approximately 11.94 acres in size, is owned GC General Commercial, and is developed with an office and sales facility. The property is currently in use for shipping container sales business. In terms of context, properties to the north are zoned SF5 Single Family Residential and are developed with single-family dwellings. Property to the south across Kellogg is owned GC and currently undeveloped. Property to the east is owned GC and in use as open space for the Auburn Hills subdivision. Directly west of the subject site is unimproved right-of-way. Property further to the west is owned GC and undeveloped. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about screening and paving. In addition, attached to the staff report is the text for the proposed custom zoning district. In terms of review, on May 8th, the District Advisory Board recommended denial. Their vote was four to three. No members of the public spoke on this item at that meeting. On May 9th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item and recommended denial. The vote was seven to five. Seven members of the public spoke in opposition and requested zone change with concerns regarding impact to value of their property, runoff into the Cowskin Creek, increased noise, and the visual character of the surrounding neighborhood and incompatibility with the development. Twenty-two protest petitions were received for this case. They totaled 7.3% of the protest area. It was under the 20% threshold, state threshold, and therefore, it can be, of course, the application could be denied with a simple majority vote. In terms of council action, it is recommended the City Council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and deny the requested zone change, again, requiring a simple majority of four of seven. Alternatives include the following. You can override the Planning Commission, adopt alternative findings, and approve the zone change request. Or, as always, you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration, again, that will require a simple majority. And with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics. So here's the aerial with an outline of the site. You can see the shipping containers that are actually present already. Here's the zoning map of the site. You can see GC in the area and SF5 immediately to the north. Here's the map from the comprehensive plan showing that new employment and new employment mix is in the area, recommended. Here's the graphic that was submitted as part of the PUD, as part of the application. Here's the protest map, again, just over 7% represent in the protest area. Here are photos from the site and the surrounding area. And just a quick note about process City Council policy to accept the public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting and not at the City Council. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? I see none. Again, these items do not get a public comment. So Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Because of additional information that's come in the case, I believe it would be appropriate to return back to MAPC for further review. So pursuant to City Council Policy 9, I move that it be returned back to MAPC.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of travel for Mayor Wu and Councilmembers Hoheisel and Glasscock to tour Greenwood Rising in Tulsa, Oklahoma, June 14th, 2024.
I move to approve the travel.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
We'll start with appointments. Councilmember Johnston.
I'll defer until you have comments, so no appointments this time.
Sorry. Any appointments at this time? I see none. We'll now do Councilmember Comments, beginning with Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to clarify my comments from our City Council Budget Workshop on June the 4th. I encourage people to watch the video of that meeting. My comments said to look at all options to balance the city budget in 2026, 2027, and 2028. I did not say lay off 42 firefighters. We must begin these discussions now and get our community input to determine community priorities and ways to address this deficit. To be clear, I do not want to raise taxes, and it's an option. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to publicly say the District Advisory Board last night, there was a member of a neighborhood that had some really strong concerns about the lack of being able to interact online at MAPC meetings and wanted the MAPC to change their policy back to allow comment and engagement online, not just watching. I told him that I would publicly say that on his behalf. He will be reaching out as well to every member of MAPC to encourage them to change their policy. And I will also say that I personally disagreed with that decision when it was made to not allow public comment online, virtually, and just in person. I think all of us, whether we run for office or seek appointment to these seats, our duty is to listen to the public. We don't always have to agree. But limiting that ability to engage online for folks who work all day is, I think, a hindrance to the process. So I just wanted to publicly say that on his behalf. He did bring it up at the District Advisory Board. The Advisory Board also agreed as well. But at the time, he said that we lost quorum, so there was no vote. So I'm saying it on behalf of the board today.
No further comments. I will add just two additional things. First, thank you very much to Councilmember Hoheisel for hosting the District Number Three Breakfast over the weekend, where we had a robust conversation with community members in District Three, which is southwest, southeast Wichita. And among those were obviously these budgetary constraints that we have and reminding community that we will make tough decisions. And those require community engagement. And so I appreciate when people show up to not just DAB meetings, but to breakfast, to community meetings, because we do listen. We do take that into consideration. But I also want to remind community that we do have a community-wide survey. And that community-wide survey shared specific priorities that we need to focus on. And those priorities happen to be crime, streets, and economic development. While homelessness was not one of the questions asked on that survey, I know that community has asked us to also be part of this conversation, to be a collaborator, and to help with community coming up with solutions together. And so, again, I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Hoheisel for hosting that and to those who attended Saturday's multi-agency center meeting alongside Vice Mayor Ballard. Again, we really appreciate people getting engaged and providing feedback, as well as helping us together come up with solutions. Last but not least, because I think it's very appropriate to end on a good note, I just wanted to say thank you to the hundreds of volunteers who dedicated their time for River Festival these last nine days. I saw their sweat and their hard work not go unnoticed by those of us in community who attended the River Festival. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you to the volunteers who chose to give up their personal time to make sure that we continue to have a community tradition known as River Fest. And thank you to our first responders who were there to make sure that we were safe and had, again, a celebration of community. And finally, I wanted to say thank you to the Hispanic community who asked the City Council to make a proclamation regarding the festival as an opportunity to be a Fiesta del Rio Day on Friday. I want people to know that you can always ask for proclamations to be voted on by the council. And the way that proclamations work is you go to our website. You fill out a proclamation request form. Then the council members, the seven of us, get an email where we then reply back whether we approve or deny. And if it has four approvals, it moves forward. And then, when that gets approved, the mayor has the opportunity to choose to or choose not to read the proclamation. So, again, I am grateful that the Hispanic community chose to ask for a proclamation, that we had at least four votes. And then I was proud to stand alongside Councilmember Glasscock as we presented that proclamation at River Festival to not just festival goers, but to all those who were there in support of River Fest. Council Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just wanted to publicly thank everyone, including Troy and the other staff members that showed up to the community meeting on Saturday. It was, I thought it was a great meeting. There were some really hard conversations that were had. But just to see a room full of people that really care and want to be engaged in the process, whatever that may look like on a Saturday afternoon in the middle of River Fest, I really appreciate the effort that was, that was put forth for that. And it's really hard to eat as many ice cream sandwiches as possible in three minutes. So I tied, and then I had to do it again for another minute. And it was harder than I thought. Paxton and I even practiced, and the pressure made it worse, so anyway.
Did you win?
I tied for second, and then I took third.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick point. I am really disappointed in my colleagues for not coming through in these eating competitions. I mean, ice cream sandwich, funnel cakes, one funnel cake. I mean, that's all I'm going to say, is we need to step our game up here.
Noted.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six one. Thank you very much.